Good afternoon. I will call to order the June 27th meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown. I serve as President of the Commission. I'm joined today by Commissioners Gagnon, Kronzer, Magrino, Slack, and Breland. You can find hard copies of our agenda in the hallway. At this time, I'll also ask you to silence any mobile devices to avoid disrupting the meeting. Our first item of business is to approve the actions from the June 13th meeting. Commissioners may have a motion to approve those actions. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, and that motion carries. Next, we will go through the agenda and determine which items will be on consent and which will be discussed. So, starting at the top of the agenda, item number one is the HCMC Intensive Residential Treatment Services Building at 3633 Chicago Avenue. That is a conditional use permit for a community residential facility. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we'll put item one on consent. Item two is the Calhoun Village Shopping Center at 3200 West Lake Street. That's a site plan review for a drive-through there. We will discuss that item. Item three is the Bricks Grocery and Deli at 915 West Broadway. Several applications for a new commercial building there. Commissioner Magrino, I understand you have a question about that, so we'll discuss item two, or excuse me, item three. Item four is the Bonadie Academy Edition at 1201 and 1203 Bryant Avenue North. That's an expansion of a non-conforming use for an addition to a school building. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item four? Seeing no one, we'll put that on consent. Item five is the PPL Youth Link Supportive Housing and Youth Link renovation at 41 North 12th Street. Several applications for an addition to a residential building there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Yes? This, right now, we're going through the agenda. We're talking about item five, which is a 41 North 12th Street. Is there anyone wishing to speak on that item? Seeing no one, we'll put item five on consent. Item six is the Spectrum Apartments and Townhomes at 803 and 815 Ninth Avenue Southeast and 805, 817, and 821 Eighth Street Southeast. Several applications for new residential buildings there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item six? Seeing no one, we will put item six on consent. Item seven also relates to the Spectrum Apartments and Townhomes at 815 Ninth Avenue Southeast. That's a variance related to that project. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item seven? Seeing no one, we'll put that on consent. Item eight is 600, excuse me, 600 Washington Avenue Southeast, 612 Washington Southeast, and 311 Harvard Street Southeast. Several applications for a new multifamily residential building there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on item eight? Seeing no one, we'll put that on consent. Item nine is the 721 North First Street Apartments. It's 721 North First Street. Several applications for a new residential building there. Is anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? All right, we have some people for that, so we will discuss item nine. And finally, item 10 is the 38th Street Mixed Use Project at 2707 East 38th Street, 3800 through 3812 28th Avenue South. Those are several applications for a new mixed-use building there. We will discuss item 10. So, our agenda as amended is as follows. Items one, four, five, six, seven, and eight will be on consent, and we will discuss items two, three, nine, and 10. Commissioners may have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, and that motion carries. Next, we will consider the Committee of the Whole Consent Agenda items. Commissioner Slack, could you give us an update from the June 16th meeting?
Thank you, President Brown. At the June 16th Committee of the Whole, we heard two items, a series of land sales. The first was 1730 Newton Avenue North, 2023 Queen Avenue North, 1505 California Street North, 2632 Polk Street Northeast, and 2800, or 28, 2008 Washington Street Northeast. And the second land sale was 901 45th Avenue North. The recommended motion was to approve staff recommendation that these items were consistent with the Minneapolis Plan for Sustainable Growth.
All right, and I will take, all right, we have a motion and a second to approve the Committee of the Whole Consent Agenda. Commissioner Lukey, here.
I'm abstaining from voting on this motion due to item number two.
All right. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, and that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting, and at this time, I'll open the public hearing for the items on the consent agenda. That is items one, four, five, six, seven, and eight. Is there anyone who is wishing to speak on any of those items? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners may have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing, none, all in favor, and that motion carries. The consent agenda is approved. Next, we'll move on to our items for discussion. We will start with item two, the Calhoun Village Shopping Center. Staff is Ms. Suther.
Thank you, President Brown. Commissioners, item number two on today's agenda is for the property located at 3200 through 54 West Lake Street. The subject property is an existing shopping center. The zoning classification for the property is C3S, which is our community shopping center district. Parcel is just under six and a half acres in size. The immediate area is within a major retail center. This is a designated land use feature within the Minneapolis Comprehensive Plan. Along West Lake Street, we have a mix of uses, large, high-density residential office uses and large retailers. To the north, we have a tall converted grain elevator into residential uses, and then some low-density residential north of there. The subject property is very unique in that it has an existing access point to the Midtown Greenway, which you can see here. Many pedestrians and bicyclists use this access point through the property. The applicant is before you today requesting a site plan review application. The site plan review application is triggered due to the addition of a drive-through. The drive-through would be at the rear of the east building at the northeast core of the site. You can see it would be right here. It would be for a double drive-through, so there would be two pickup windows, and they have provided the adequate stacking. So, the only land use application before you today is the site plan review. The subject property is located within future transit station area for the West Lake Station, for the Southwest Light Rail Project, and it is within the area that was just completed for the West Lake Street Multimodal Transportation Study. So, that transportation study looked at future connections through bike and pedestrian, through the proposed site, if they could work something out with the current property owner or a future developer. So, in this case, the future developer is proposing something more or less consistent with the plan. So, you see, according to the plan, they still show that existing greenway access point. This is currently how it's laid out, so you'll see that there's things that it's called for, such as elevated bike and pedestrian access points. And so, I'm going to go back to the site plan and show you how that translates here. So, here, you're seeing that the applicant is proposing to continue that access point to the Midtown Greenway. This would be elevated for bike and ped, and then you'd have a split bicycle and ped area there, and then it carries all the way through to the south. Public Works has been very clear that they do not want to add any wayfinding signage at this time, or additional paint, markading the site, because the future connections that would connect Midtown Greenway to Lake Calhoun will not be in place for some years. It's on the long-range plan, which is about five to 10 years out. So, in addition to that, the applicant is also providing a three-way transit stop here, so there'll be stop signs at this intersection, here, and here. They did not want to have the northbound traffic from Market, which is private at this location, queuing up and then causing some issues with West Lake Street. You'll see a very extensive landscape plan. The site is being brought into compliance with the minimum landscaped area requirements, minimum landscaped yards. For the most part, we'll talk about that through alternative compliance, but they're also providing the minimum tree and shrubs, as required by the zoning code. So, the only alternative compliance requested for the site is the landscape yard at the south, and that is where West Lake Street starts to ramp up, if you will, to go over the Midtown Greenway and the former tracks. So, there's a portion here that would not have trees or shrubs. They're not really visible from the public realm. And then landscape area at the north, and staff recognizes that the property to the north owned by Hennepin County is heavily treed and provides sufficient landscape area. They also have a fence there. So, that covers the third point of alternative compliance, which is screening of the north parking lot. And then also, we have an existing condition with these parking stalls that are located in that location. There are no proposed changes there, some of which are right up to the property line. Staff recognizes that as an existing condition. And then 50 feet to an onsite deciduous tree, all of them except for those parking spaces I just noted on the northwest corner of the property. So, staff is recommending approval with several conditions. Oh, here, let's go through. So, the proposed tenant is a drugstore, as I mentioned. We have a basic layout. We are asking that the shelving and other functions not block the proposed windows. The applicant is replacing what in the Barnes &amp; Noble space as display windows with actual clear glazing that will allow views in and out of the site. Here's a rendering. So, it's not really a building addition. The only trigger again is just that drive-through per Chapter 530. And here are the conditions as stated. So, it was very important to staff, long-term, that if the amenity to provide that Midtown Greenway access through the property, if that were to ever go away for one reason or another, we're asking that that come back to the planning commission for review. So, through the condition of approval, recommending approval of this site plan, that that would be one of the triggers. So, either the bikeway or the ped connections to the greenway, if that were to go away, then we would bring it back for an amendment and review it here. Otherwise, the common conditions of approval, review of the site plan, et cetera. So, with that, I can take any questions?
Right. Are there any questions of staff? If there are none, at this time, I'll open the public hearing for this item. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first, and just so I have an idea. Can I see a show of hands, how many of you wish to speak on this item? Okay, so, a few of you. Yeah, let's have the applicant speak first, and please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. Tony Keapley, representing Dorn Companies and Dorn Calhoun LLC. We're the prospective purchaser of the shopping center. Our address is 7803 Glenroy Road in Bloomington, Minnesota. I don't have much to add. Ms. Eider did a fantastic job, I think, summarizing our proposed site plan. I just want to point out that the improvements are not mutually exclusive. We would not be creating the bikes, bicycle, and pedestrian enhancements to the site if it wasn't for the drive-through, and if we're not awarded the drive-through or afforded the drive-through, we won't be moving forward with those enhancements. Those enhancements were purely meant to improve the safety around the site and actually preserve the access point up to the Midtown Greenway. Thank you.
All right. Are there any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Kronzer?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. Do you know how wide the fence opening is right at the Midtown Greenway? Right now, it's fairly wide, and it's being shifted a little bit to the east.
I think the location is not adjusting. It's just how it travels through the site. So, you'll see it, it's intended to line up, if you will, with the future pedestrians.
Because it's about 15 feet now. It'd be good to keep that width. It's a good width, even to get potentially even emergency vehicles. Also, do you know how the vehicles are detected at the drive-through? Is it a camera detection? Is it a, you may not know the answer to this because it's the
Right now, I believe there's no detection. We don't anticipate the volume of the drive-through being so significant that we need to have that detection. It would be actually as you would pull up to either the window or the secondary window on the double drive-through.
Okay. And can you, is there any changes to the site lighting with this proposed pedestrian-bike?
There is no proposed changes to the site lighting.
No proposed change, okay. Okay, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Slack?
I think the applicant just mentioned his perceived amount of use of the drive-through. Why does it constitute two lanes?
The two drive-throughs, the double lane drive-through actually was requested by our tenant, and as we looked through the city code, we saw that it, there was still allowed within the city code, so that's why we're asking for the double drive-through. I believe it's for convenience for their guests.
Did you, did you look at other options for essentially parking lot layout and alignment of the drive-through? For me, there are some real positives with the plan. You know, the pedestrian and bicycle enhancements are fantastic. The raised crosswalks are fantastic. Essentially, getting rid of two drivelanes, essentially two driveways, and consolidating into one is great. My problem with this layout and orientation is that as you exit the drive-up window and you essentially turn sort of, sort of north, you're looking towards the greenway, and if anybody is riding north on a bicycle lane or walking, the driver itself, he's not looking at that individual. And so, it would take a pretty large movement for that individual in the car to turn over and to actually see somebody coming up. And so, I feel like the stop sign's in the wrong spot, and I feel like that that driveline is too close to the crosswalk. I'd almost prefer to see it, if it has to happen, I almost prefer to see it further to the east. Maybe you pick up some of that extra parking up in the, sort of, the northeast corner of the site, but it seems real problematic from the standpoint of the interaction of bikes and peds, which you're really trying to promote, and cars coming out of that drive-through.
We can certainly look at moving it to the east. That was actually intentional, to have the drive-through come up and go straight north and allow for a stop procedure before they could actually then take a left, other than, you know, kind of reducing the driveline and having it come straight through where there would be some uninhibited, you know, vehicles moving through without a stop procedure.
And maybe that's the right thing, just from a, somebody who does site planning. It feels like you want people to come out of the drive-through, hang a left, and then stop at the crosswalk, and be able to look both directions, rather than stop and then hang a left into potentially incoming bikes or peds.
And like I said, we did that actually intentionally to get them to stop versus coming straight through the drive-through, you know, straight through ignoring a stop sign and immediately going left. We thought that was a safer procedure.
All right. Are there any further questions of the applicant? If there are none, we can move on to some other speakers. And I will ask all of the speakers, obviously, we do have a long agenda tonight, and many people wishing to speak on the various items, so I'll ask that you keep your remarks as concise as possible and not simply repeat what others have said. So, again, can I see a show of hands of who would like to speak on this item? Yes, please, you can come to the microphone. You can decide. Go ahead, and please state your name and address for the
Yes. Commissioners, Councilmember Bender, my name is Michael Wilson, 3439 St. Louis Avenue. I am a member of the Cedar Island Neighborhood Association Board and the Sidney Land Use and Development Committee. The first slide that was put up showed the townhouses just on the other side of the railroad track. I lived in one of those townhouses, so I'm a nearby neighbor to this property. I'm also the Sidney representative on the Midtown Greenway Coalition Board, and I'm the Chair of the Improvements Committee. So, I have a variety of ways which I am very involved and interested in the outcome of this. The resolution that you've seen from the Sidney Board certainly states that we are opposed to the drive-through. We realize that this is allowed by city code, so we don't have much to say about that, but we do want to state our opposition to having yet another drive-through in our neighborhood, and yet another drive-through in a commercial area of the city. If the city code is amended at some point in the, you know, hopefully near future to further restrict drive-throughs, that would be very much in keeping with the Complete Streets Program, which our city has put forward. We are all tremendously excited about the new Public Works Director, who will be coming on board, and will have all kinds of ideas to implement complete streets, and just all these things that make our urban area wonderful. Another drive-through does not take us in that direction. When Highway 7 is open, people who need to use a drugstore drive-through can go four and a half minutes down Highway 7, and they've already got a 24-hour drugstore drive-through down there. So, that being said, we are very much appreciative of the site improvements, the landscaping, looking at pedestrian and bike safety. For those of us who use it virtually every day, and many of you also use it, I know several of you are, several of you are very avid bikers, and you know this area very intimately, as we do. It's really catch as catch can. So, there are a lot of good things that happen there. I just wanted also to say, we have just celebrated the 40th anniversary of our neighborhood newspaper, Hill and Lake Press, and as a result, I've gone back through all 427 previous issues that were published. Issue number one, Volume One, Number One, from March 1976, March 1976, 40 years ago, I ought to go in the bottom, Arnie Carlson fights lake area high-rise. This is Arnie Carlson, lawyer back then, fighting a proposed construction of a 22-story building near Lake Calhoun and a 15-story high-rise near Cedar Lake. We've been at this for a long time, all the neighborhoods, not just Sidney. We've been at this for a long time, safeguarding the character of our neighborhood and making sure that it's an urban neighborhood, not dwarfed by 25, 30-story high-rises, but also keeping access from the Midtown Greenway to Lake Street, and at some point in the near future, access across Lake Street into Lake Calhoun, encouraging pedestrians, encouraging bikers, encouraging people sitting outside. In other words, the urban fabric. So, our resolution, I think, from Sidney speaks to our feelings about this. Another one of the speakers is going to speak about the many people who have written letters just expressing dismay about this, but it's going to happen, and we hope changes can be made to the code, so there won't be more drive-throughs in many other places nearby that could also have drive-throughs. We hope, we don't see that. But we do appreciate the site plan improvements, the landscaping, the crosswalks, and various things there. So, that's what I have to say.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Yes, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Craig Westgate. I'm at 3523 St. Paul Avenue. I am also on the Sidney Board, I'm the Chair of the Sidney Board. I'm also on the Land Use Committee as well. I wanted to start off in kind of two different ways. The first way is that I'm the person that got numerous emails from my people that didn't understand why this was allowed, and there was a numerous amounts of them that were very opposed to, why are they doing two? Because they can. There hasn't been any traffic studies, there hasn't been any studies from the drugstore to say why they need to, let alone, they're not, they're very opposed to one. And it is an area that we work very diligent on, trying to get more pedestrian connectivity, safety for peds and bikers, and we just, there's a part about this that we feel it is going in the wrong direction. So, that's my one hat. My other hat is, as the Chairman of Sidney, the resolution in front of you, hats off to our Land Use Committee, because virtually all of this that's there, the reason that it's there, the thinking going into all of this, is because of the people that are on the board that worked very hard in a very short period of time to try to put together this list of conditions. Our primary access, our primary point is making sure that that access does stay open. That had been discussed at, had been discussed at one point in time of possibly not staying open, and so we're very, we're very protective of that. We're trying to make sure that all these little pieces that are coming in front of us, whatever development happens, whatever transit comes our way, that we are trying to connect these people, pieces. We have, we have pedestrian access trails that we've already set up with, with new buildings that are being built. We're trying to continue these things. We're trying to make this a safer place and a very tough place to be safe. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. I don't think so. Is there anyone else? Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Bob Corrick. I'm Chair of the Sidney Land Use Committee. My address is 2816 West Lake of the Alice Parkway. And the, of course, it's been stated here that Sidney has opposed this drive-through, but we have also recognized that it's a permitted use under the existing zoning. And so, the neighborhood has tried to work with the company and tried to get as many improvements and safety for pedestrians and bikers, and we do commend the company for making all the improvements that it has. And we think that this is the best result in terms of the connectivity in the trail. The one thing I wanted to emphasize here is that we've talked about the multimodal study, Shannon did, and that was, as we all know, paid for by the funds from the Southwest LRT Project, and we also all know that that project is not yet fully consummated. So, the, this particular, this trail that has been envisioned and studied in the multimodal study from Midtown Greenway to Lake Calhoun was studied in the context of the, of the station at Chauvin, the LRT station at Chauvin, and all the pedestrian activity and other types of activity that's going to go on. But it's our view that, in Sidney, that this trail, this connector trail, really should be embraced by the city whether or not Southwest LRT is ever built. And so, and I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, Shannon, but I don't think that currently this trail is in any of our plans in the city. It is, pardon?
This part of the plan is not currently on the CIP, so it's not on the capital improvement plan, but it is a project on the Public Works list being long-term, which is five to 10 years.
So, okay, so is it a recognized bicycle trail then in the bike plan?
I think it's only shown right now in the multimodal study.
Okay, that, my point is that this multimodal study is sort of viewed as something connected to LRT, and I think that it's important that we've gone through all this work with Dorn. We have a really excellent trail through private property here, something that's hard to do, and we're recommending that, even though this is not totally your purview in terms of you're not approving bike trails and that sort of thing, that if we are going to approve such a plan, as we're talking about here with Dorn, that, that, that the, that the trail, that the total connector trail be in the city's long-term bike plan. That's our point.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on item two? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, and Commissioners, we just have one application before us, a site plan review. Are there any further questions? Commissioner Kronzer?
I have a question for staff. Maybe this is a question for Jason. Is there anything in the city code that this allows bicycles from using a drive-through?
No. We've tried to use it before. I worked on a Dairy Queen at Minnehaha, and they proposed a bike through, but it's never been opened. So, there's nothing that prohibits bicycles from using a drive-through per Minneapolis ordinance.
Of course, Commissioner Kronzer, individual companies may have their own policies about who they serve or don't serve in drive-throughs, but certainly city code doesn't
who they serve or don't serve in drive-throughs, but certainly city code doesn't prohibit anybody from accessing a drive-through on a bike or on foot.
Okay, thank you. I have other question for you. You also may not know the answer to this. So our existing LRT station areas have PO districts, pedestrian overlay districts, the proposed stations do not. Do you happen to know why the proposed stations do not have pedestrian overlay districts as a, as a view to the fore, to the future as, as we anticipate these projects coming online?
So we do anticipate rezoning study coming online, assuming Southwest LRT moves forward to the point where staff is prepared to undergo that type of a study, and then, as we have seen in other transit station areas, staff has adopted pedestrian-oriented overlay districts. That particular type of district would prohibit a drive-through, that is not currently on the property.
Right. Do you know the timing of that staff work?
I think, the last I spoke with the long-range planner for the Southwest sector was dependent upon some review related to the environmental impact statement.
Of the Southwest project?
Jason, please jump in if you have more.
I'm not familiar with the specific proposal for the timing of that rezoning study, Commissioner Cronze.
Commissioner Bender.
Mr. Wittenberg, has that, has, has anyone started the process of, of that zoning text amendment?
Specifically to rezone around the station area? Not that I'm aware of.
Right, are there any further questions, or would someone like to start the discussion off with a motion? Commissioner Cronze?
I'd like to make a motion.
All right.
To approve, staff recommendations to approve the site plan with the six stated conditions with an added seventh stated condition. And number seven, my proposal is, the drive-through shall allow bicycles and the applicant shall install a sign facing the Midtown Greenway stating such.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve item two A, the site plan review with the six stated conditions, as well as the seventh condition related to requiring that the drive-through allow bicycles and adding a sign that states that. Commissioner Slack.
Yeah, I just want to go on record and, and explain while I, why I will be voting against the motion. You know, if anywhere a drive-through was appropriate, I guess this would be it on this site. I guess the problem here is that it's allowed by the current ordinance. Looking at the site, visiting the site, looking through the documentation, that parking lot is currently a really underutilized parking lot, it's essentially tucked behind the building. I think historically, and this is just based on my perceptions, maybe this is a staff parking lot, an overflow parking lot, and so it's not always full. I think with the drive-through, you're starting to allow more automobile traffic into that area. I think the improvements related to bike and pets are fantastic, the race crossings, the separated bike lane, pedestrian sidewalk are fantastic. It's unfortunate that it's an either/or in this situation. I don't really understand why it can't just be one single driveline through this drive-through area, and I do see a real issue with safety as it relates to the current stop sign location and how automobiles will be exiting from the drive-through lane to get back into vehicular circulation to head south. And so, for those reasons, I'll be voting against the motion.
Commissioner McGrino.
I just wanted to check with Mr. Wittenberg, I'm definitely supportive of Commissioner Cronze's motion in spirit to require the applicant to let bikes use the drive-through lane, but is that something that we are able to do? I mean, that kind of will come down to whatever Walgreens wants to do, I guess.
Commissioners, in this context, I believe the Commissioner has the authority to add that condition to the site plan review application.
Right. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Commissioner McGrino?
Well, I'll just say in general, you know, as I think in the neighborhood folks' knowledge as too, we're not really allowed to do a ton here. I mean, it's allowed by code, it is obviously very underwhelming that there's going to be a train station here probably in five years, and we're going to be locking in a drive-through in a one-story Walgreens with a parking lot right next to that. But that said, I think it is nice that we're at least getting what's estimated in the study here, $100,000 worth of public realm improvements with the bike connection to Lake Street, so I will be supporting the motion.
Commissioner Cronze?
Yeah, just, I guess, speaking to my motion for a minute. Now, I was involved with this multimodal study on my day job, and I remember when this was going on, everyone said, "Well, it's a great idea, but that'll never happen." This, this bike-ped connection from the Midtown Greenway to Lake Street, and, you know, this is something the applicant does not have to do. So I, I do thank the applicant for taking that step and doing something good in the, for the public to make this connection. Our hands are tied as Commissioner McGrino says, this is allowed. So I think this is maybe some of the facts of life, take a good of the bad, and maybe get our codes tuned up a little bit here. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion. Commissioner Freeland, is that you?
I was wondering if the applicant could answer a question?
Yes, that would be fine.
So the second drive-through, so I have a Walgreens in East Lake that has a drive-through, and I've been using it on my motorcycle mostly, and just the logistics of how prescriptions are filled, it's like waiting in line. So having two cars with their motors running, waiting for things, doesn't necessarily make anything faster in my understanding of how pharmacy logistics work. Am I incorrect in that?
I'm not an expert on pharmacy logistics, we do have other drugstores within our portfolio, and, and I can speak from example, you know, often when I take my kids into the doctor, they auto-fill at, at a Walgreens, and when I do go to the drive-through, they're immediately ready for me to be picked up. And I think maybe that's one of the preferences of having a double drive-through, if there is someone waiting, they can still service other customers.
I, I don't mean to be argumentative, but it's, the same person has to go find the bag with the name on it, whether it's ready or not, so I don't, having something ready doesn't mean you can come in and grab it, it still has the same kind of personality issues, so. I, I just, I think you might be wasting your money with the two drive-throughs, and I think it would be advantageous to have one, but that's my opinion. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve? If there is none, clerk, please call the roll.
Aye.
Slack?
No.
McGrino?
Aye.
Lupi Pierre?
Aye.
Cronze?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
So that's six to one.
Right, and that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on item two. Our next item for discussion is item three, the Bricks Grocery and Deli at 915 West Broadway, and staff is Mr. Hanauer, and I believe Commissioner McGrino, you had a brief question on this item, maybe we don't need a full presentation just in the interest of time, maybe you could ask your question.
Yeah, I was wondering, you know, looking through the site plan here, the applicant's requesting a variance for no side yard setbacks, which I, I think is fine, given the circumstances. I guess I wanted to ask if the applicant would be amenable to bricking up the space that's going to be left between the two buildings, because we're kind of going to be, I think you said, is, be less than a foot there, so you're going to leave.
And I will let the applicant talk, but just in communication with the applicant, yes, they are willing to have along West Broadway, no visible space between the existing building to the west and to build out to the property line to the east. So when you're going, a pedestrian or a driver on West Broadway would not see any space between the buildings. They are willing to do that.
Okay. So I, I don't know if we need to do the whole... And, well, yeah, we, we still will need to hold a public hearing on this item, but Mr. Hanauer, I might just ask if, if we are in agreement that we want to add a condition stating that, should that be added to the site plan review, or one of the variances?
To make it explicit, yes.
Okay, okay.
Chair Brown, I believe there is someone here from the public that would also like to talk, and I can, I can talk about the reason, I can sum that up as well. One of the letters in your addendum packet is from the neighboring property to the west, their concerns with grading, that being the current grading situation that is... The top picture is after the fire that took place, but before the demolition of the Bricks Building. The, I believe the person that owns or manages this building is here to express their concerns, and it's about the grading that's currently in place, and that's allowed water to infiltrate the basement. That is something that's beyond the applications that are in front of you.
All right. Are there any questions of Mr. Hanauer at the moment? If there are none, at this time, I'll open the public hearing on this item. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first, if someone is here to speak on behalf of the applicant, and please state your name and address.
My name is George Barr, I'm with Barnelson Construction, I'm representing Nader of Bricks Grocery. We, this has been a long process for him, as you're aware, there were four buildings that burnt down on West Broadway. Three of the people that demolished their buildings decided to not rebuild, so Mr. Nader has decided to take, I think he's owned the store or bought it about 14 or 15 years ago, he's taking whatever insurance proceeds he has in addition to money out of his own pocket, wishes to rebuild, and that's what we're hoping to start shortly. I didn't have a chance to get this to the Planning Commission, but I did have a meeting with NERC, and we have a support letter supporting the rebuild of Bricks Grocery. This has been a long process, he had that fire last April, and he wants to get started as quickly as possible.
Right, thank you, and you can hand that letter to the clerk to be submitted for the record. Are there any questions of the applicant? If there are none, we can move on to any other speakers. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Yes, and please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. My name is Chidi Ebwijo, and I'm the current custodian of the property next to the proposed building that they are trying to build, that would be 919 West Broadway Avenue. I'm not here to oppose the building, to the construction of the new building, but I am here basically because Mr. Barr, who is in charge of Barr Construction, when they were demolishing the building, they caused some damages to our property. And as the city planner has already explained to you, he has just told you that they are asking for a variance to make sure that there is no gap between the two buildings. However, there is an existing problem right now because of the way Mr. Barr graded that land, and I do have video and pictures to show you. Ever since Mr. Barr, you know, demolished the building and graded the land, he graded the land in such a way that the water, the rainwater that falls is tilting towards our building, and we have owned that building for over 15 years, we have never had any kind of flood in there, and we've been dealing with this flood. We've cleaned it twice, but each time it rained, the water comes in. So the problem needs to be taken care of on the outside if we are to start the problem on the inside. And I have pleaded with Mr. Barr, since he's a contractor, he has all the heavy equipment to, I mean, to do the thing, because what happened there was because, in the early 1900s when these buildings were built, they had limestones, and the reason for the limestone is to pave away the water. Mr. Barr destroyed those limestone that, that was in the middle between our building and their building. Now there's water going in there, and he's asking for permission for a variance for this property to be constructed. If this property is being constructed the way it is right now, we're going to be having flooding, and there will be no way to get in. So I'm just asking this committee to hold off on giving Mr. Barr any kind of permit to, to do this until that problem on the exterior of the property is taken care of. That's all I'm here for.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions of the speaker? If there are none, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? We can, yeah, yeah, as, as the applicant, you can, you can respond.
I've got a bunch of paperwork that I did not want to present to the Planning Commission.
And I, I will just add, you know, some of those, some of those concerns are, well, they're valid concerns, as Mr. Hanauer stated.
I had a conversation with Al Olson, who is the head of the Inspection Department in the City of Minneapolis. We agreed to provide a grading plan as part of our building permit application, okay? We understand that we, that the owner of 919 has some concerns. When we did the demolition of the building, it required a soil erosion plan permit and a demolition permit. Those were signed off by David Bond, who was the building inspector for that area, okay? I'm not going to get into our insurance adjuster being out there to help him with any potential claims, and he was instructed to mitigate any water intrusion on his building, which he did not do. So in short, we have to get our plans approved by the city for building permit grading plans, and we will adhere to any requirements that the City Inspection Department and Plan Review Department puts upon us.
Thanks for that clarification. Are there any further questions of the applicant? If there are none, is there anyone else who would like to speak on item three? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on this item, and we have, let's see here, three items before us, two variances and a site plan review. Would someone like to start things off with a motion? Commissioner Lupi Pierre?
Yeah, I will move staff recommendation for variance A to reduce interior side yard setback, and I'm, I'm going to support this for a few reasons, and I'll talk more about the site plan review, but I do actually think your concerns are interesting and valid, but we aren't allowed to delay approval of this based on a civil matter. However, I do think as an architect that actually constructing a building without the, on, on the setbacks for the most part, and perhaps with how they plan to slope the roof, will actually do a lot more to alleviate your water concerns than having a site that's freshly dug up and not compacted. I would imagine they didn't compact the soil readily since they knew they'd be digging it up for a new foundation shortly, and that's probably, if I had to guess, without having been on-site, what's causing the problem. So while we're not allowed to do any ruling based on that, I would say that this is probably the best thing to actually mitigate future rain damage to, I assume, your basement and foundation walls, is to get this constructed with adequate drainage of the water. So that's, in short, why I'm going for variance A.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve variance A. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Cronze?
Aye.
Lupi Pierre?
Aye.
McGrino?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Freeland?
Aye.
That's seven zero.
And that motion carries. We have second variance and a site plan review. Commissioner Lupi Pierre?
I'm also going to move staff recommendation for variance B to reduce the minimum required parking and, as well as the site plan review, and explanation, I'm lumping those two together because I feel like this is very good urban design, especially for West Broadway, having sat on the West Broadway Life Steering Committee, this is exactly what the committee envisioned when they talked about that historic Main Street being preserved and enhanced and revitalized, and I'm so excited that investments are being made in this manner that keeps it consistent with the finer qualities of the neighborhood, as those who live in North Minneapolis are well aware, we have many. So I'm excited, I think that it's wonderful, I think it's great, it just shows the continued energy of redevelopment along the avenue in a smart way, and both of those things help support that.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve item B, variance for off-street parking, and item C, the site plan review. Any further discussion on, on those motions? Commissioner McGrino?
Yeah, I wanted to add that condition to the site plan review, that would be item eight, that the applicant continue the brick face along the side of the building to meet with the building that's right next to it. But yeah, I definitely agree with everything that Commissioner Lupi Pierre said, it's, you know, there's been some losses in this part of town, and it's great to have something being rebuilt that kind of fits the urban character that used to be there, you don't get that a lot anywhere in Minneapolis, usually you end up with a parking lot out front.
All right, so Commissioner McGrino, you are moving that we add an eighth condition to the site plan review, that the brick faces continue to meet with the adjacent building. Is there a second to add that condition? Motion and a second, we can add that condition. We can add that condition on a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion to add an eighth condition carries. We can go back to our original motion now to approve items B and C, the variance and site plan reviews. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Freeland?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Lupe Pierre?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Seven zero.
And that motion carries. Moving on, our next item for discussion is item nine, the 721 North First Street apartment staff is Ms. DeVorec.
Good evening, commissioners. This is a project located at 721 North First Street in the North Loop neighborhood. There are five applications before you. The applicant is proposing 124-unit residential building. It would be six stories in height with one additional story of mechanical equipment and an elevator overrun for a total of seven stories, approximately 90 feet. The building will have a principal entrance facing North First Street and walk-up units along Eighth Avenue and also First Street. Vehicle access to the building will be along Eighth Avenue. Abasset Creek runs under the southeastern portion of the site, and the applicant has designed the footprint of the building to follow the easement that follows the path of Abasset Creek Tunnel. Over the area where the tunnel is, Public Works will allow a surface parking lot, and they are proposing to have a 20-space surface parking lot over Abasset Creek Tunnel. This project was reviewed by the Heritage Preservation Commission on May 3rd. This is located in the St. Anthony Falls Historic District. They did approve the project. That action from the HPC was appealed to the full city council. On May 13th...excuse me, on June 9th, the zoning and planning committee took up the appeal, and they did deny that appeal and added a condition that the elevations of the building on Eighth Avenue and then the elevation facing Second Street North also be brick, as the HPC had added a condition that the First Avenue North...First Street North, excuse me, elevation be all brick. The elevations and plans in your packet reflect an all-brick exterior in those three facades as a result of the full city council action that was approved on June 17th of this year. So the first application is a conditional use permit to increase the height of the building. Per the zoning code definition, the proposed building is technically seven stories in height with six stories of residential and one story of mechanical equipment. The seven story occupies a very small percentage of the overall building footprint. It's classified as a story because the elevator overrun exceeds 14 feet in height. If it did not, it would not be a seven story. It would be a six-story building per the zoning code. And the mechanical story of the building is set back 34 feet from the primary facade along North First Street and 32 feet from the primary facade along Eighth Avenue North. The proposed height of the building is compatible with other buildings in the area. It exceeds the downtown height overlay district allowance by six feet. In the St. Anthony Falls Historic District, the design guidelines call for mid-rise, seven to nine stories, and low-rise, four to six stories, buildings that are most appropriate. Again, the HPC did approve the building in this configuration and this height. The height of the building will not impede access to light and air for surrounding properties. The closest buildings are separated from the site by public streets or a series of surface parking lots that are approximately 200 feet in width. The shadow studies that are near packet indicate that the proposed building will cast shadows on the residential properties to the east and the west. However, the shadowing impacts do not appear to be significant, given the context of the area. The area is densely built out, and that during the peak...the periods of peak shadowing, much of the surrounding vicinity is currently shadowed by those existing buildings. The height of the buildings in the area range between two and eight stories. Again, this proposed building is technically seven stories, but six stories of residential. The second application before you is a conditional use permit for a surface parking lot. The site is currently utilized as a surface parking lot. There are 125 spaces in the existing parking lot that will be demolished for...torn up for the proposed development. All of the existing spaces are visible from the public streets. The proposed parking lot will be located towards the interior side of the site, adjacent to the parking lots that are not part of this project. The building will conceal the parking lot from both First Street North and Eighth Avenue North and along Second Street, and then that south property line, the applicant is proposing fencing and landscaping to help screen that from those views. The third application is a variance of the west interior side yard setback from 15 feet down to 10. And this is located in the C3 zoning district. Setbacks are required for residential uses with windows facing the interior property line. It's five plus 2X for every story over the first with a maximum height of...or maximum setback, excuse me, of 15 feet for this building. That maximum setback is 15 feet. The second through the six floors of the building will be constructed 10 feet from the west interior property line, and therefore the variance is required. That west interior property line, again, abuts a property line that is utilized for surface parking. In the area, it's characteristic to construct buildings close to the property lines, and so the reduced setback will be more in keeping with the area. The character of the area and the location of Abasset Creek Tunnel are unique circumstances that were not created by the applicant. The next application then is a variance to increase...variance to increase the maximum amount of parking on the site from 1.7 to 1.77 spaces per unit. And the maximum parking requirement in the downtown parking overlay is 1.7 spaces per dwelling. There are 124 dwelling units with a maximum parking requirement of 211 spaces. In addition, residential developments over 50 dwelling units need to provide guest parking spaces, and this development has a requirement of two guest spaces, so the maximum parking requirement is 213. They're proposing 222 parking spaces, 220 for the residential and two for the guests. However, the applicant has indicated that as part of the sale of the building, a parking lease for 70 vehicles needs to be maintained for office tenants in a nearby building across First Street North from the site. With these 70 spaces, when you subtract those 70 spaces, the total amount being provided on the site would be 152 for the 124 dwelling units or 1.26 spaces per unit. While this does not exceed that maximum parking, if the lease for the office tenants were to go away at any point in the future, the maximum parking requirement would be exceeded by a total of 12 spaces. CPED finds that the needing...that needing to provide a parking lease for the 70 vehicles for office tenants is a practical difficulty, and providing the additional parking spaces for those office tenants will help alleviate parking pressure on the public streets. The last application is site plan review. They do meet all of the standards in site plan review except for the minimum window requirement, and then we have added a couple of additional conditions to the development. The project is in compliance with the minimum window requirement except on the first floor of the building facing the onsite parking lot. So that is actually the side of the building where this is facing that west property line or the adjacent surface parking lot. There are no windows in that location. Due to the...the applicant has indicated that due to the location of the enclosed parking, that these walls have been designed without windows. Since the building has a window requirement on all four sides, CPED is recommending that alternative compliance be granted by the planning commission to allow no windows on that one building wall. The additional conditions that we have also added to site plan review talks about the recessed areas on the ground floor of the building of the west facade to align with the bays above. And in these plans, I believe, have been adjusted to show that you can see that the windows in these window bays, there are the recessed areas of the brick wall. So if you recall from our conversation committee that holds a brick wall, and then the recessed areas are brick, and they're inset one brick or three inches, so you will see that definition and get that shadowing effect. We're just recommending that, and this has been adjusted since this went to HPC, but that those recessed bays align with the window bays above. The other condition then that we've added, the applicant is proposing to screen the parking lot with landscaping and then a vinyl coated chain link fence. Because that fence will be visible from Second Street, we are recommending that it be a decorative metal fence instead of a black vinyl coated chain link. So those are the conditions that we've added to site plan. We are recommending approval of all applications, and I will stand for any questions.
Okay. Commissioners, Commissioner Lupe Pierre?
Yeah, Hillary, I'm just wondering if you can touch a little bit on the alternative compliance being requested for the windows? It seems as though that's kind of a condition the applicant's created in terms of having the garage. Can you maybe expound on that a little bit in case I'm missing something?
We felt that because the parking...because the building has...in other projects where a building has a window requirement on all four sides, we have provided relaxation. You do have to have a back of house for projects, and in this case, that building wall would be looking into their surface parking area, not surface, but their enclosed parking area. And so in lieu of looking into the parking lot, we have recommended alternative compliance, again, because they have a parking...a window requirement on all four sides.
And are they doing any other enhancements or improvements to mitigate the lack of basically the bare wall that will be facing out, even though it's an interior yard?
Yeah, and that bare wall is set back, you know, it's on the other side of the surface parking lot. So that bare wall is set back from that interior property line, and that interior property line is then adjacent to surface parking lot. So the...to help screen, I guess, the parking lot and also the blank...the blank wall, it would be the landscaping and the fencing.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess you kind of answered it, but I had a question about how...where that blank wall would be visible from public spaces and what's facing it. So as you're walking along, whichever street that is.
Yeah, so this is Second Street.
Second Street.
Eighth Avenue is up here. So this is a surface parking lot. So...and there's surface parking here. This property is...is...surrounds the building on the two sides. So past these cars and these cars, you could potentially see through those surface...those cars parked in those parking lots and see that wall, but it is set back significantly from that property line.
Okay. I'll just note, I did have concerns about that as well. And then I wondered if I missed it, and I apologize. What happened to the...as this came through the council, we added conditions related to the materials?
Correct.
After the HPC?
Yep.
Appeal. So is this updated from that?
These are updated.
Okay.
Correct. The one thing that I noticed in your packet, the rendering is not, but the elevations are correct. And so when this went to HPC and before council, this had been metal. They've now brought the brick all the way up through the sixth floor. There is a metal cornice, but that meets the intent. On Eighth Avenue, this material in the middle, the dark brown, had been a dark metal. Now it is brick. And then facing Second Street, it's brick all the way up to the sixth floor, just like you see on First Street.
Okay. Are there any further questions of staff? Commissioner Lupe Pierre?
So then just...just to be sure that I'm clear, because they're in the downtown height overlay district, they are allowed by right six stories or 84 feet. They're just requesting more to get to the height increase of approximately six feet.
Correct. The applicant has indicated, although they don't want to do this, they could add a slower elevator and bring the overrun down, but because they choose to install better, efficient, faster elevators, that the overrun is slightly taller.
So that's what's triggering the request for the higher height. It's the base of the elevator on the roof.
Correct. It is for that elevator overrun.
All right. So but if that weren't there, were invisible, for example, this would meet...they're allowed...but they're allowed to build onsite by right?
If that elevator overrun were lowered, it would be six stories as of right.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions of staff? Seeing none, at this time, I'll open the public hearing on this item. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first. And please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Jason Lord, 3532 Fremont Avenue South, and I'm a project manager with Solheim Companies.
I am Sarah Klein, 5339 Pleasant Avenue. I am the asset manager for Solheim Companies. We represent Solheim Companies as a developer, and we are owners in our properties. I helped begin and develop this company nine years ago. We are a small Minneapolis company specializing in turning parking lots into thriving communities, supporting both the long-term goals of the North Loop Neighborhood Plan and the long-term goals of the Minneapolis Comprehensive Plan. We are part of the development every step of the way, from the initial idea to city approvals, to when our residents move in, to hosting neighborhood events, to connect our newest residents to the North Loop. We are a local business with our office about 200 feet from the parking lot in question. We own and manage four neighboring buildings with nearly 400 residents and 42,000 square feet of office space. We build communities that are sustainable, support neighboring businesses, bring in new business, and provide incubator space for the new creative economy. We provide live-work space for dozens of businesses, bring greatly needed property tax base to our city, and additional funding for parks. Please view the parking lot pictures from this past weekend. And Jason, if you can kind of point out on that map where the building would sit.
So our building is taking up one-third of this existing two-and-a-half acre surface parking lot. It's a square city block, and our building is located around this area, the parking lot, in the rendering compared to a photograph of the parking lot from this past weekend, showing the live-work storefront-style loft spaces along Eighth Avenue.
Our current parking count on the 720 lot is 120 stalls. When our building opens, we will have 220 parking stalls, including 70 stalls for existing contract parking tenants that use the lot. This is a net gain of 100 parking stalls. As was detailed by Hillary, we are requesting a variance to add parking beyond what is allowed by zoning code. This variance will support the existing 724 office business...businesses located across the street that use our lot and promote their long-term stability. Key facts to date: The North Loop Neighborhood Group unanimously supported our project and wrote a letter of support in January. The Heritage Preservation Commission unanimously supported our project. When the Itasca condo owners appealed the HPC's decision, the city zoning board unanimously overturned the appeal. Our project will help grow Minneapolis downtown and North Loop neighborhood population, consistent with Minneapolis' plan for sustainable growth, the 2010 North Loop Development Master Plan and zoning codes, and the 2012 St. Anthony Historic Guidelines. We understand that change can be difficult, and we are willing to work alongside our neighbors to build a vibrant and growing North Loop neighborhood. We hope that alongside the unanimous support of the North Loop Neighborhood Group and the Heritage Preservation Commission, you will support our project at 721. We thank Hillary for presenting our project to the committee, and we'll return for any questions to the committee for discussion.
Right. Thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? If there are none, we can move on to some other speakers, and just so I have a sense, how many of you would like to speak on this item? So quite a few of you. I am going to ask that we limit our total testimony to 45 minutes. So right now it is 5:40, so we can spend 45 minutes or until 6:25. If needed, I will just remind you to...well, first state your name and address into the microphone for the record, and also keep your remarks as concise as possible, not simply repeat what others have said, and keep them fairly concise. I won't time you, but I'd ask if you start to go over about two minutes or so, I may just remind you to make sure other people have some time to speak. So we can start over on this side of the room. Who would like to speak first? Yes, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
My name's Richard Rubenstein. I am a 20-year owner at the Itasca, so I have a big stake in the neighborhood, personal stake in it. And you know there's a bunch of us speaking, and my role in this presentation is to talk, give you the...we're going to give you the statistics from a petition that was...that was spread and signed, and then just make a... and, and, and then just make a few comments. First of all, the message of the petition says, over six, over 60, over 6,300 individuals oppose the 721 development and demand that the City of Minneapolis deny all variances, conditional use permits, and reject the development as a whole. Now, I think it's fair for me to say, in con, that, that's not, we're not here to just say there shouldn't be any development. And I'm not here saying that. But there is a unique parking problem associated with this development, and it has to do with the retail and commercial space and long-term parking needs of, of the neighborhood, which is actually where I'm coming from, is a long-term parker who needs parking, long-term person who needs parking. So, I think our, at least what I'm here to say is, I actually welcome the development. I don't just want a parking lot there. But the parking problem should be addressed. Otherwise, I think the, the vitality of the neighborhood will be lost and, and we'll lose something important, and that's what they're going to be talking more about.
Right.
Thank you. My name is Eric Foster. I am a resident of Minneapolis, 1017 25th Avenue Southeast. This here is our petition, put together by Matt Jansen, that has over 6,254 names on it. That is a petition in direct opposition of this proposed development, not development in general, but this proposed development. 3,584 of these signatures are from within the city. 2,570 signatures are outside of our city. And of, of those, 1,081 signatures from the rest of our nation, as well as 24 nations. So, I just want to remind everybody that this is a petition against this particular development. And the state's watching, the nation's watching, and the city voters are watching. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next? Yes, please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
Hello, I'm, I'm Patrick Sussmelt. I live at 2222 Seventh Street in White Bear Lake. And I would like to talk more about the variances, because from what I, my understanding here is that variances are granted when there are practical difficulties exist in complying with the ordinance because of circumstances unique to the property and are not based on economic considerations alone. But like, if you look at the photos, it's just a pretty flat lot, and I don't really, I guess I don't understand, like, you could build without the variances. And it seems like the variances are for economic gain. And I guess I would just like to ask, is that what difficulties are being solved by these variances? I also don't know if I can ask questions.
You can, I, I think at this point, it would be best if, if we simply took, took testimony, and then we can see if, if the Commissioners want to ask those questions of staff afterwards.
All right, well, thank you.
In the interest of time. Thank you.
My name is Sharon Johnson. I, I live at 708 North First Street in Minneapolis, a 20-plus-year resident of the Itasca. I have attended numbers of different hearings on this issue. I have a focus, which is on variances, but I need to say a couple things first. I think that this development does not meet the aesthetic needs or is in context with our neighborhood. I think the changes will be great, as are other developments by Solheim. They just, aesthetically, they don't, the materials used and the aesthetics are not appealing. As far as the height variance, I have a concern. I know Hillary said that, she talked about that there had been shadow studies done, but I am concerned about the loss of light, and also, there's another building about a block away that has rooftop access, and there's entertainment up there. Will, if, if the elevator's there, will there be entertainment on this rooftop access? Parking is the main concern here. I know that, because we are losing 130 spaces, and we don't, we can't afford to lose those spaces, because in the neighborhood, it does not allow for people that come into the business or doesn't cover parking for residents. But what I also want to address here, and I'll make this brief, is there is another variance that is being requested, and that variance is for setback. I believe that there's a city ordinance that requires that there be a 15-foot setback in, in developing of properties, and this is being, it is being requested that this variance be given, so that this would not be the concern or the need for this area. My concern is that it will impact the safety of pedestrians that are traveling in the area. Our, our particular little niche of the North Loop has a great deal of pedestrian traffic, and I don't think that egress will be as fluid, nor are the safety concerns of the pedestrians being addressed by doing this change. I'm wonder, I think it, I believe that it is Mr. Gunsbury, that he has a burden to show that by not receiving this variance, that it is a practical difficulty to develop the property. And I would question as to whether or not he has done this, because it appears that, you know, his gain, his desire for the variance is more an economic focus rather than a practical focus. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Ayana Ruggero, and I am a resident at 708 North First Street in the Itasca Lofts, as well as a small business owner in the historic district that we're talking about. According to Gunsbury's proxy, all of the groups that she mentioned were completely on board with all of this. I would like to point out very briefly that this room is not representative of those folks that said yes to all of these votes along the way. It is not us. We all understand and respectfully agree to present our case and request of you to deny the conditional use permits for the proposed development at 721. We understand that your process is set up to be just fair and to avoid litigation. However, just as Commissioner Vreeland dove into the proverbial penumbra of the logistics and impact of the increased walkings, drive-throughs, we ask that you offer, our community, your consistence, the same considerations. We, the residents, business owners, and patrons, request you deny the parking variance, conditional use permit for the following reasons. The increase in parking proposed by Mr. Gunsbury would not serve to eliminate practical difficulties unique to the property. Instead, it serves the financial interests of the developer alone, as he and his company will require private parking for the new renters and building five at Itasca, which he recently purchased privately. There have been no appropriate or reasonable solutions for the decreased parking for the current residents, businesses, and owners and patrons. I would also like to note that there are many among us who pay over $100 per month to park across the street in those surface lots, and there is bound to be somebody else who wants our money for that, along with a mixed-use development that will support the local businesses in our community. Thank you.
Right, thank you. And please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ailin Michelle Middlefort. I live at 708 North First Street in Minneapolis, in the Itasca Building. I am talking specifically about Statute 525.500, "In the same vein of practical difficulties existing to comply with the ordinance because of circumstances unique to the property." "We do not believe or see that there are unique circumstances with the existing property that justify approval of the setback or parking variance. Requested variances are not required to construct 721 North First Street according to city ordinance, nor do they relieve Gunsbury of any practical difficulty to develop the surface parking lot. We ask that you explain how there is a practical difficulty that grants a variance to the setback in parking requirements." Thank you.
And please state your name and address.
Hello, James Moore, 3410 Gerard Avenue South, which is an uptown Minneapolis, which is a area of Minneapolis, which is no stranger to luxury apartment developments. And I've personally seen the impact that has had on our community over the past 20 years. It is certainly not the same uptown that Prince wrote about. To the parking variance, I would oppose that. As someone who has worked in the North Loop for 15 years, I don't know where I am going to park to come to work, let alone people coming from the suburbs that don't have access to light, light rail. And perhaps one day they will, but for the time being, that's not an option for a lot of people. The representatives from the developers spoke that their mission is to build on parking lots to create thriving communities. And I would argue in this case, with respect, that you're going against your own mission statement. It would destroy a currently thriving community to not have parking available for residents coming in to support businesses. And I might add the arts, which is something that Minneapolis has been known to be ardent supporters of. And then, just very quickly, the photos that were shown earlier of the parking lot in question, you'll notice that those were all daytime photos. I would be interested to see some photos taken after sundown. The only other parking available, if this, as proposed, goes through, would be the lot, the Washington Ramp on Washington North, 10th Avenue, which has hours of operation from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., which, of course, is not a solution for any nightlife in the Twin Cities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Shannon Paul. I live at...
I think, I think Commissioner Bender had a question for the previous speaker.
Oh, no, I actually just wanted to stop to clarify.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Mr. Wittenberg, there's some confusion, because my understanding is the variance is to increase the amount of parking required. Since we're having so much testimony about the parking, I just wondered if you could quickly clarify that.
Right, parking that would not serve the public interest.
Okay. So if we deny the variance, there'll be less parking.
Commissioners. So, Mr. Wittenberg, let's, let's let Mr. Wittenberg clarify that.
That, that is correct, that the variance related to parking is to allow them to provide more parking than ordinance would allow them to normally provide.
Okay, we can go back to our testimony. Yes, and please state your name and address.
I'm Shannon Paul. My address is 4819 Idaho Avenue North in Crystal. I am also from Go963, which you should know as part of Go Media. So we are located in the Ford Center, of course, another business that is in the North Loop area. So I have had firsthand experience as the density has grown in this area, and there are some things that we all know is really good about that, and some things that are definitely a detriment to the area. We consider this particular project a similar thing that would, in the long run, be a detriment to the area, and there's a few reasons why. Again, we would like to see this particular variance denied, because it does not take into account the rest of the economic responsibility to the area and only looks at the economic upside for this particular developer. You know, I also am on the board for the Pacer Center and the Autism Society in Minnesota, and I bring them up because they are two examples of community organizations that this community has been supporting. And we would encourage you to take into account the existing businesses in that area that are already supporting our Twin Cities community, regardless of whether other people say that they might do a similar thing.
Thank you. Speaker.
Hi, I'm Brian Miller, 4318 Pillsbury Avenue. I moved here from Illinois six years ago, oh, eight years ago now. It's been a while. I was going to move to New York or Los Angeles to perform stand-up comedy. That was what I was going to do. But I chose Minneapolis specifically because Acme Comedy Company is here, and it has a national reputation, and people all over the country told me this is where I should go. I think sometimes we lose sight of our own national treasures. We've got Acme Comedy Company. It's the first avenue of comedy. And down in that North Loop, you've got Acme Comedy Company, Bachelor Farmer, Spoon and Stable, Bunkers, all businesses that get us written up in the New York Times, get us, mention us on The Tonight Show. Acme Comedy Company was on The Tonight Show six months ago. By having a tiny, to making the slight variations, you have these small bump for a developer that could cost us press publicity and acclaim on a national scale. And most importantly is, this is not an either-or issue. It's not about no development. It's not about evil land developers building directly on top of a business. This is something that could be fixed. It's not, it doesn't have to be either-or. But if we look at it that way, and we don't plan carefully, the planning commission, then we could lose some vital businesses. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Earl Elliott Urban Smith, 5635 Minnetonka Boulevard, St. Louis Park. And I worked in the North Loop for four years now, and I used to live at 545 North First Street, which is the River Station condos. And parking was always an issue. Like, when I moved about a year ago, I had to move because of all the other luxury apartments they're building around. So my, my rent went up, so I don't know how many luxury apartments they can build around deja vu, but like, it's... So I had to move, but when I lived there, the parking situation was terrible, like, at night, as Ben, or, I'm sorry, James said, that you can't find parking at night certain times. It's like trying to go to a Star Wars movie. Like, it's incredibly hard. Like, you would have to walk people back to their cars, talking about girls. It's just hard to get more, like, businesses to come out from the suburbs to park if they're not, there's nowhere to park. Like, we have nowhere to park. We work there, there's nowhere to work. I mean, there's nowhere to park to go to work. People have to fill meters, and then if they take away, what is it, 100 more spots? I think? So they're saying they're going to add private parking, so it's not going to be for us. So, pretty much, it's just impossible to park.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Mikel Baj. I live at 3223 Central Avenue Northeast. I was wanting to respectfully ask the commission if any of you have been to a show at Acme Comedy Club before? And, and did you have a good time? People, when I do shows there, have you been? It's really a great community builder. It's that you meet your neighbor. It's a wonderful experience. I do cultural clean shows there. And I, I just would like to say, I have people come in. Most of my crowd comes from the woods. I, they don't like to merge, but they'll come to my comedy show because they want to see Acme Comedy Company, and they will eat a lot of food, and they will support the community. These people are coming from White Bear Lake. They're coming from north of Anoka. They're coming from Forest Lake, Wyoming. I've had a guy fly in from Washington. That was creepy. They want to see the area for what it has to offer, and if these small businesses can't survive because of the parking, and I, I think the photos were misleading there, because I've not been able to park in that lot before. The businesses can't survive, and they won't be, there won't be a draw in the neighborhood for these people to come and spend their money. If you project my numbers and I don't sell out, if you just projected my numbers for the year, that would be 85,000 people coming to this one club for the year, and that's on small crowds. And that doesn't count the lab. It doesn't count the other entertainment in the area. And also, just saying, if we have to park over half a mile away, it's not safe for a single female to walk, and I, I won't do it. And I don't expect a handicap person to do that, or an ill person to do that. And I would hope that you'd show some empathy for these people. They can actually attend somewhat easily a really nice nightly event. Thanks very much.
Thank you. And next speaker, please state your name and address for the record. Yes.
My name is Greg Coleman. I live at Residence 1302 Douglas Avenue South. And pretty much what we're talking about here is the density of downtown. You guys want to get 70,000 more people into the downtown area, which is fine, which is what we are all for, and there's what, 125 units that are supposed to go above our club, which can fill up to anywhere from 300 to 400 new possible residents filling in that. So I don't want them to use that as, but listen, there's going to be 300, 400 people coming into this neighborhood and coming into this area. The issue is, with those people coming in, there's a lot of businesses that you guys, that the developer will use and say, hey, listen, come to North Loop. We have entertainment. We have restaurants. But all of that stuff is going to be kicked out if there is nowhere to park. We had over 6,000 petitions signed from people over the nation. So that's over 6,000 people that are potentially not going to come to this neighborhood anymore, to have 300, maybe 300 people who are going to move in. So we're not saying, don't develop this, but let's develop it smart. You don't have to develop it right away and quickly. Take your time. Find a way that this can work for everybody. So we're talking about employees losing their job. We're talking about people having to move out. So this is this all that we're asking. We're not against it, but let's do it the right way. Everything doesn't have to be built now, now, now. That's why this neighborhood is successful, because people came in. They made small businesses. They made sacrifices, and they did... And they did it the slow way and the smart way. And if we're going to kick them out just to get some new people in here right away that's going to say, we're going to sustain this area, it will not sustain. And that club will be on your hands.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, and please state your name and address for the record. I should mention too, the microphones work best if you're a little ways away from it.
Check one, yeah. I always have to follow Greg again. My name is Tim Harmsen. I'm at 3223 Central Avenue Northeast, Minneapolis. I just want to talk about the 2025 density goal. They want to bring 70,000 people into the downtown to increase the density. And I think that's great. I think that the development is great. We need places for people to live if we're going to increase the density. However, it's a quantity goal. Is it a quality goal? Is it a quality goal? You know, it's a quantity goal, but is it a quality goal? And this development is a very small bubble that's created a giant wave. There's news cameras, there's articles, there's Twitter. There's a lot of traffic about this particular development because people see it as a tipping point for this city. Because First Avenue and Acme are synonymous. And if people can't park, and I just say this quickly, you have to understand the mechanics of a comedy club. On a Friday night, 300 people come in, see a show, they leave. 300 more people come in, see a show, and they leave. Have you been to the North Loop recently? It's really hard to find parking, okay? And imagine 300 people coming in, 300 people leaving. You know, we need to address this in terms of a real concerted effort to make parking available if we're going to add 70,000 people. And I just, I just want to add that Mr. Gunsberry can't utilize his existing 70-space service lot for commercial parking due to Minneapolis ordinance 551.750, which prevents any conversion of an accessory parking lot to a commercial parking lot. So even if he wanted to help, he can't. He's hamstrung by the city. So I'd like you to consider that. Please consider changing the ordinance or doing whatever you have to do to really seriously address parking in the North Loop because it's a great neighborhood that we all love. So thank you.
Thank you. We should.
Sorry, I apologize, I'm going to recycle, but.
No, we should, we should let everyone just speak at once.
But Commissioner Bender wanted us to pontificate on the parking specifically. And so I wanted to bring it up again.
Well, we should, we should let others who haven't spoken first speak. So if you don't mind, we should move on to another speaker.
Well, I'll yield my time to other speakers, but I just wanted to respond to the concerns about acne parking then.
Okay, yeah, we can, we can see if commissioners have some questions. So anyone else who hasn't spoken yet, please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Andy Erickson. I live in North Hollywood, California. I was on the last season of Last Comic Standing and I got second place. And I flew all the way in here to Minnesota to do this public hearing and also to go camping. I met a lot of my best friends at Acme Comedy Club. It was where I became a person. It was where I met my husband. It's where I got married. I got married in the comedy club. It was stuffed animal themed. And there were unicorns there. And I read a quote from Harry Potter at the sermon. And my mom cried for very different reasons. But it was a beauty, and Nick and Tim Harmsen were there and they officiated my wedding there. Because it's not just a comedy club. It's a home for so many people. It's, and it's also a place where people get to be themselves, find out who they are, express themselves. Comedy is a huge part of government. It's a huge part of figuring out what's right and what's wrong, pushing boundaries, challenging the norm, challenging things. Comedians can cause a lot more effect to this world than sometimes politicians can. You know, my mom was a politician and she ran. She was on city council in Ham Lake and she gave me some tips for today. I'm still shaking. And I also, I also take public transit a lot. And I, and it's not as glamorous as people think. I know we want to move towards, hey, let's get more people taking the buses and walking. But I mean, I've been sexually harassed on the bus twice and at bus stops multiple times. So we might want to, oh, let's do something about that while we're here. So it's, I get that it's a tricky situation, but we want to do what's best for the community. And I think Acme has done so much for the community. And I think we want to try to help them as much as we want to try to help something new. I guess something's new, so it seems more important. And it is like, it's kind of hard to like, take time just to help a, to help a comedy club. But they give so much to the community and every night, Monday nights, they do free comedy nights and they bring in kids from the college to come out. And it's free entertainment. And 18-year-olds can come out and do things and have fun. And they don't have to drink and they can just be with their friends. And it's a great, it's a great place to meet people and connect with people. And I really hope you treat it as a historical building because that's what it is and respect all the buildings and offices there. And thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. All right, next speaker.
My name is Lindsay Wallace and I live at 2521 Garfield. And I just wanted to speak to a lot of the concerns about parking and that there hasn't been a lot of hard data around who's using parking and what parking is available to Acme. Because the owner of that building has 156 spots in a surface lot that's adjacent to the lot being developed. There's also a 73-spot lot that's just down the street across from the Minnesota Orchestra. And I'm very much in favor of dense urban environments. I do think that some of the other variances, there are legitimate concerns about them, like the setback variance. But I do think that we need to build cities around who lives there and density and walkable neighborhoods. I go to Acme Comedy Club regularly and I ride my bike. And I know a lot of other people do too. I know that a lot of people I run into at those shows live in Minneapolis and arrive via alternative modes. And I would be concerned that we would prioritize surface parking lots over places for people to live.
Thank you, next speaker.
Hi, my name is David Huntsberger. My address is 502 North Kingsley Drive, Los Angeles, California. I flew in, I'm at Acme Comedy Club all this week headlining. I came here to represent comedians from all over the world to share how special this place is. It would be nice if we could all, or the crowds in general, could ride their bikes in the winter from all over the city. That seems entirely impossible. This place is so special. It's so unique. Comedy, if you haven't been to a comedy club, you might have a general sense of what it is, that it's just some lunatic talking about their penis in a very unoriginal way. And Acme is not like that. It is rare. It is unique. It, comedy in a lot of ways gets treated like a commodity, much like going to Walgreens and going through the drive-through and getting your medication. It just cycle people through. You've seen how the comedians came out to support the scene. That wouldn't happen everywhere. The rest of the world was jealous that Prince lived here. They're also jealous that Acme is here. Don't lose both of them.
All right, next speaker. And just a reminder, we have, I just want to make sure that we're not simply repeating things. We have heard a lot about the loss of parking and the setback variance. So just a reminder for anyone else who wants to.
Well, the good news is I'm the, one of the concluders. So I'll probably touch those quick, but then there won't be a lot more of it.
And please, please state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Cy Ammonson. I live at 3520 Panzi Drive, real address, in Calabasas, California. I lived here for quite some time. And on the record, I would like to say that I am widely regarded as Louis Lee and Acme Comedy Company's favorite comic of all time, on the record. Everything David said was very true. And there's a lot of people who are fortunate enough to make their living. I know this is more than about just Acme, but I am one of those people who is fortunate enough to make my living coming out of that place. I travel from city to city. I've been in every major city and a lot of the non-major cities, like the Toledo's of the world. And I've developed the opinion that Minneapolis is the best city in the country. I'm obviously biased, but I think we can all agree the reason for that is the character, right? That's something that every single one of us is proud of, is the character of this city. And it comes from decades of people caring about the arts and private business and cleanliness and all the things that we take a ton of pride in. And when I travel anywhere, I was just in San Antonio. I was in Tulsa. I was down in Baton Rouge, not fun places. But when I mention I'm from Minnesota, wear this stupid shirt on stage, people come up and they talk about First Ave. They talk about Acme. They talk about Caboos. They used to talk about Nyes. That is what we are known for, our character. Now, I have been a part of the North Loop for the last 12 years. And just like everyone else, or most everyone else, I am excited about it being the fastest-growing community in our city. I think it's amazing. I think that's a great thing. I have brothers and nephews who live there. Some of them who live in your guys' buildings. The Sole Tava, or however that is pronounced. It's a real Fav situation, but Sole Tava? Nailed it. They, they live there. And the reason people come there are these attractions, okay? It's the Acme. It's Gunsberry, and you guys, you list them on your website, right? As the reason people should come in. You know, the Spoon and Spine, the Loop, Acme, all these things there. That's the reason people come. So it's exhilarating that we want to bring more people to the area. But there's this joke that's become kind of famous in Minneapolis in the, in the last few years. And it's a person will tell another person about a favorite business that is closing. Hey, man, did you hear El Chipo Records is closing? And then the other person will say, oh, what? Are they putting up more luxury apartments? And then everybody laughs, not like you guys, but you know, when it gets said near one of those businesses. And the reason they laugh is because the number one rule of comedy is truth. Now, I'm not saying that's, that's all true. I'm not saying luxury apartments are destroying the community. What I'm saying is there's a grain of truth in that. No one here is against the development or development in general. No one here is against bringing density to this community, like a number of people have said. All we are asking here today is that it's done with the care, the commitment and the attention to detail that a city that is known nationally for its arts and its character deserves. That's what this city deserves. Now, if you take the time, you explore the options and you find that right where we're at right now is right where we should stay, well then, that's the way it is. But take the time. Take the consideration. Pay attention to detail and make sure we stay that city. That's what we are asking today. Because people will leave. It won't happen immediately, but people's businesses will be hurt with parking, the word I wasn't supposed to mention. And it will slowly have people leave. And then all these people who are moving in, yes, we will have more incomes there and you will have a nice walkable neighborhood that nobody has anything to walk to. And then we will also have lost the thousands of people who travel in to these numerous businesses. So in conclusion, in my overly long-winded ramble, we're asking you politely and compassionately today to deny these variances and delay the development until a solution is reached, not just for the businesses or the current residents or the future residents, but for all of them. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, next speaker. Yes, please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, all right. My name is Dana Suggal-Ali. I live at 8241 Henslow Avenue in Cottage Grove. I have been a resident of the Twin Cities forever. And I grew up, I grew up in the suburbs and I used to live in downtown Minneapolis. And one of the reasons why I moved out of living in downtown Minneapolis, even though I work in downtown Minneapolis, is that I couldn't park. And then at the same time, I couldn't have guests who came and visit to park. And it was a total nightmare. And yet, I'm all for getting rid of the parking lots. I'm totally okay with that. But as, as a person who, who wants to find compromises in things, I think it's important that we need to acknowledge that we do, we are a city where people commute from outside in. And one of those things is definitely for our theater districts and for our shows and for our theaters. I'm also a comedian and I've been dreaming about performing at Acme ever since I could actually find the courage to go on stage. And, and, sorry, I'm going to be really nervous. But I, I really, I really get sad when I think about it going away because it's such an important place to me where I found my voice and I found a sense of community. So thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Those are tough acts to follow. My name's Matt Jansen. I live at 708 North First Street. And there's a couple of misnomers that I'd like to clear up that were presented from Solom. One is there's this talk of 70 parking spaces at the new development that are reserved for a commercial. Okay, so the building in question, there's two commercial tenants which are not being allowed to renew their lease by the end of the year. Okay, so these 70 commercial spaces are really being reserved for when this building gets flipped into more apartments. Okay, so I just want to make, call that out. The second thing is there was an assertion made that the North Loop Neighborhood Association had unanimous approval for this development. Well, it's on record. You can go to the North Loop Neighborhood Association website and see that they actually approved a four-story building out of seven. Nor did they approve any variances that are being discussed today. So we're talking about two different projects apparently. The next point I'd like to make is the assertion that Solom has long-term alignment with city planning and development. And this is true because the 602 Nolo flats that exist on North First Street, they're ready to open soon. They took advantage of the transit incentive whereby their parking is, the minimum requirement for parking is cut in half. And that's because it exists within a half mile of the light rail transit. We all, we're all aware of that. So I just find it interesting that if, if Solom is truly aligned, why aren't they pursuing this transit credit for this new development? It's half mile away from light rail transit. But again, it goes back to creating parking for future development that has, has yet to happen. Just to give you an idea, I know we've talked about parking a lot today, but just to put the finer point on it, right now, in the Itasca Building, for one parking space of covered underground garage, $40,000. Okay, so if that doesn't tell you that there's a demand for parking in the North Loop, I don't know what does. That's a separate mortgage. So for us to try to, as a building, come up with a parking solution for ourselves, private parking, we have to come up with $40,000 each to build a ramp, okay? So I guess what we're asking for today, there's a lot of common themes that have been presented. And a lot of it has to do with the city's level of preparedness for the rapid development that's happening in this city. And right now, I think it's becoming clear that the city's not ready or it's hard for the city to keep pace infrastructure-wise with the rapid pace of development. And when I speak about infrastructure, I'm talking about parking ramps to replace lost parking. I'm also talking about pedestrian safety, bike safety, and then neighborhood character. These are all elements that were discussed today. So I'm asking you, City of Minneapolis, to help us come up with a solution that balances a new development and also replaces lost parking.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Lupe Pierre, did you have a question for the speaker?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, when you mentioned earlier that you were asserting that the 70-plus spaces wouldn't in fact be for other commercial uses in the area, but for something else. Can you expound on that a little bit?
Sure, there's, myself and other people in the audience today have great relationships with the commercial tenants, which I believe there's 23 of them in the Itasca Building. And not one has been approached by Solom companies in regards to contract parking for these 70 spaces. And again, this building, five of Itasca that Kurt Gunsberry owns, he's in the, he's in the business of trading apartments, right? So he's got two commercial tenants that they're not being allowed to renew. In fact, they've expressed that they'll likely be out November of this year. And so it's becoming pretty clear that those 70 spaces are going to be meant for a future apartment.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who hasn't spoken yet who would like to speak? Yes, please state your name and address.
My name is Peter Bergerini. I'm at 3055 22nd Avenue South. I'm hearing a lot of love here for the Acme Comedy Club. I think that's well deserved. Um, I think that's well deserved, I understand it. I'm also hearing a lot of issues with parking. Um, I do have a recommendation, there is lots of parking in the suburbs. Acme is free to relocate. I, however, don't think they would be as successful in the suburbs as they would be in the city. There's a certain ineffable benefit to being in a city, the vibrancy it creates. And sometimes that comes with trade-offs, like maybe it's a little harder to park your car. And those are the best, those are the trade-offs that those of us that live in the city put up with to enjoy the city. Also, there's talk about character. I think, um, that's a, a loaded word, it means a lot of things to a lot of people, but I feel like we should all at least agree that parking lots don't contribute to character. People do, and to a much lesser extent, buildings do. If Acme will be destroyed by the loss of this parking lot, I have to wonder how stable this community is if something so comparatively small is able to rip it apart so quickly. So I think the, um, I support this building, I support more residents in the North Loop, and I think that these complaints about parking are, quite frankly, ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, one last speaker. Please state your name and address for the record.
Stacy Frank, 250 East Sixth Street in St. Palm. And I completely disagree with what he just said. So, I come at it from the perspective that when you walk into Acme Comedy Club and you descend those steps, you're descending into greatness. It's the smell of the building, it's the brick, it's the dark community feel that you get when you're sitting next to someone that you just want to laugh with. And it's just the atmosphere of the building itself. I mean, I know parking is a huge deal, but just the atmosphere when you walk in is something completely different. And if you were to change that, then I think some of that magic would be lost. Thanks.
Right, thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Kathleen O'Brien, 1115 Hampshire Ave., North Golden Valley. I just want to reiterate, uh, what everyone is saying, which I don't know if you guys understand. I started stand-up in New York City, and you would think that is, you know, the, the greatest place to do stand-up. And when I was doing stand-up there, people would always ask me, oh, you're from Minneapolis? That's where Acme is. It's widely regarded as the best club in the country. Bottom line, if we don't have that parking lot available, we're going to lose business. And to have to relocate or to have to shut down would be a real tragedy. And I just politely ask that you let us keep this magical place. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. And we just have a minute or so left, so please state your name and address.
Hey, uh, I'm John Thomas, uh, 1015 21st Avenue Southeast. I'm the outgoing External Relations Officer with the U of M Comedy Club. And, uh, we've talked about this amongst the club, um, in the last few weeks, and we're all big comedy nerds. And Acme is like the cornerstone of the comedy community in Minneapolis. And when you look at other cities' comedy communities, clubs have closed for a lot less. You know, this isn't a trivial, uh, action against the club. And it's taken decades for like Chicago's comedy scene to come back, um, and other comedy scenes, uh, across the nation. I think that all of the members of the U of M Comedy Club have had, uh, important and life, uh, flashpoint moments at Acme Comedy Club. I know me and my friend Kate, a few months ago, saw Greg Berent there, and he spent three hours after one of his shows talking to us about getting into comedy. I also think it's important to note that Acme is a place where a lot of voices are heard from every part of the community, um, including the LGBT community, um, the, and other minority groups. And I think that it's a real treasure to have a place where there's so little barrier of entry to have all of those voices heard. And I think that when people that are in college are able to go to a place and see those voices, that it affirms their aspirations. So, um, thank you.
Thank you. And it, uh, it is 6:25 now, so we, we did allow 45 minutes for testimony, so we're, uh, going to wrap up now. I think we were fortunate to have heard from so many of you. So at this time, I'll close the public hearing on this item. And commissioners, are there any further questions? Or, uh, would anyone like to start us off with a motion? Commissioner Slack.
Well, actually, I'm going to, uh, start off with an apology. Uh, I, I unfortunately have to leave, uh, but I did want to just say a few comments about this project. I, I actually have to go for work and testify in front of a committee in another city regarding a project, and so, uh, I'll be in the position that you were just in. Uh, I think the first thing, uh, I want to thank all of you for coming out. Uh, this was a, a really well orchestrated, uh, presentation. Uh, usually, we get a lot of people coming up and, uh, are very emotional and animated about, uh, specific projects and maybe not, are, are not always as informed, I think, as, as a lot of the individuals that were here today. So, uh, we appreciate that, and, and thank you for the testimony, because it does, uh, help make informed decisions for us, uh, as a planning commission. I was really looking forward to this project, because I lived in the North Loop for about 15 years. Uh, I owned a condo right down the street. Uh, I was on the first, uh, neighborhood board when the North Loop became a neighborhood. Uh, I started the Planning and Zoning Committee with David Frank. Uh, so I have a lot of, uh, long-term history with the neighborhood and a lot of love for the neighborhood. Uh, it, it's interesting to hear this conversation now, because when we started this neighborhood, all we wanted was development, because we had nothing. We had Itasca, we had a couple other buildings that were starting to transform, and, and there were not people, there was nobody on the streets, we had plenty of parking, there was no cars. Uh, for a neighborhood to, to really transform in 15-plus years is, is pretty amazing. And we always knew that these times were going to come. We always knew that there were going to be issues with parking, and, and maybe that was one of the reasons that I actually had to move. With that, uh, there are other issues. We, we heard a lot early on, um, as a, as a young neighborhood, about, uh, views of the downtown. We have no control over that. We heard a lot about development rights, uh, we don't have a lot of control over that. I think one of the things with this proposal here tonight is that, even if we don't grant the variances, uh, and they're actually pretty minor variances, this project could still move forward. It could still move forward pretty much in the context that it, it looks like today. Uh, and we don't have a lot of control over that. Um, so that's what I wanted to say. Uh, I appreciate, again, your testimony, and, uh, I'm not leaving because of the testimony, but I, I'm leaving because of work. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gagnon.
I just want it clarified, how many of the parking spaces will be accessible to the public? And not just the, um, development and the retail?
One of the challenges with this site is, was unlocking the parking question. And everybody's talked about parking. Thank you. The office building has long-term leases for the parking. And so the parking in the current lot right now is long-term lease for the 724 Office Building. We have absolutely no plans to convert that building into apartments. In fact, it wouldn't work, looking at the floor plate. So, the challenge with developing this site was to move the existing leases that are long-term parking leases, which we are parking on our 715 lot. It's long-term contract parking. Our residents are filling the indoor parking with that. Then those long-term office tenant leases will move into this building. So we have 70 spots reserved for that. That being said, we've seen the parking question, the parking demand in the North Loop. We have a higher ratio of parking in this building per apartment than our other projects to exactly address that need and that there might be additional parking. And we can't operate, as was brought up with the zoning ordinance, we can't operate a new hourly lot, but we could contract with other parkers or do a valet service on the exterior lot that's nestled between the elevator building. So there are lots of options that, you know, perhaps could work in the future, that we'd work for, but at least 70 and probably more will be for the office building across the street.
Commissioner Lupe Pierre.
Yeah, I had a follow-up question to that. So if the long-term parking, or the 70 spots are designated for the office parking, what are the hours of the office? I mean, it seems to me as though there's two different, um, audiences that play here. One, that it would primarily be a day occupancy, and one which would primarily be evening, weekend kind of occupancy. I mean, is there an opportunity for shared, um, resources, even though they'd have, obviously, contracts for those spaces? If they're only using it from, you know, 7:30 to 6:00 PM, it seems as though there's 70 spaces sitting empty when this audience seems to think that it'd be most used.
And absolutely, I think there is a great opportunity for that. It depends on the office tenant. So right now, one of the tenants is, is Night Owl in the 724 Building, and they do a lot of work at night. So sometimes the lot is full at night, um, for their particular business. So it's very odd, but most businesses would be during the day. We've specifically designed our building, and it's one of the reasons for the articulation on the northeastern side, where there's a separate mezzanine level of parking that has spots in the exterior lot. So those are very easily accessible for other contract uses in the neighborhood.
And have you been in communication with the owners of Acme to see about contracting those spaces?
Good question. And I, I wanted to say for the record that, that we view Acme Comedy Club as a city and a national treasure. We love Acme Comedy Club, and we want Acme Comedy Club to stay. You know, the whole North Loop and everybody is stronger if Acme stays. We did not, um, we heard some concerns with the parking at the previous HPC Committee, but nobody had reached out to us from Acme Comedy Club until the petition. When we had the, the petition and it got picked up by the news, we reached out to Mr. Lee and met with Mr. Lee. And we want to do everything that we could to try to help Acme during construction. We floated ideas for valet parking in our 715 lot, because as you said, a lot of the office parkers are during the day, so will have some capacity at night. But we don't know what new office tenant might be, what the demand is. But we want to do, you know, everything from, you know, a sign to point where alternate parking is. We've met with the City Public Works and emailed Councilmember Frey about more metered parking. Many of the streets around there aren't even metered. So along the whole Star Tribune block, it's blocked off, not accessible parking. So there are empty streets without parkers right now. So we've emailed and are working with the city to park on that. But I also want to stress that Acme Comedy Club, its landowner is Schaefer Richardson, and they own 160 of the parking spots. That is two-thirds of the lot that we are not developing. We are only developing one-third of the square block.
And how many, how many parking spaces is that one-third?
That one-third is 120 parking stalls.
Alright, we, we can't, we can't take comments from the audience, uh, at this point. No, no, there's, the public hearing is now closed. Some commissioners had questions for it.
So, of those 120 spaces, how many of those would be currently available for people to park at, to go to Acme? If, do you know the answer to that?
It depends on the business and it depends on the night. So there are cars that are there 24/7, and some nights, they're almost completely occupied by, um, one of our office tenants. And other nights, as has shown this past weekend, the lot is almost completely full. So it's really, we don't have an exact number, uh, because none of those spots, they're all contracted to the office building. None of them are designated for the Comedy Club or other comedy clubs, and it's right now, uh, opportune parking, if the spot's available, there's a pay box. It's the old system where you stick the envelope in. But if the spot's not available, you, there isn't any parking there. It's designated for the office building.
Thank you.
Commissioner Magrino.
Is that, so the Night Owl Office user, is that Star Tribune, maybe?
No, it's a, it's a different business, that's the, the name of the business.
Okay, I was just asking, because if it was that, it'd probably be something that'd be there for a while.
Are there any further questions, commissioners? If not, we have five applications before us. Would someone like to start off the discussion with a motion? Commissioner Magrino.
Um, I will start off with item A and move to adopt staff findings and approve the application for the conditional use permit for height.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second, uh, on item A to approve the conditional use permit for height. Is there anything you'd like to add, Commissioner Magrino?
Uh, I think, uh, Commissioner Slack summarized the whole issue pretty well. You know, in this case, as we discussed, it really is effectively a six-story building, but the elevator requirement is, it's kind of driving the, the additional height on that. So, yeah, I'm in favor of the motion.
Right, Commissioner Lupe Pierre.
I just wanted to, um, say that I'll be, um, voting in favor of this motion, just because by right, they could build this building. The only reason it has asked for a CUP for the height is for basically the elevator penthouse, which will not be visible by the street anyway, and has no impact on any of the concerns raised by any of the speakers today.
Alright, is there any further discussion on item A, the conditional use permit for height? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Freeland?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Lupe Pierre?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
So that's 6-0.
And that motion carries. Next, we have item B, the conditional use permit for the surface parking lot. Someone like to make a motion? Commissioner Magrino.
I will move, uh, item B and adopt staff findings, uh, to approve the application for the surface parking lot in the downtown parking overlay district.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on item B? Commissioner Gagnon.
Sorry, I'm just still trying to, the numbers. So, there's 160 spaces left. They're creating 222, and 70 of those are the, were the 70 included in that parking lot originally? So people didn't have access to those 70 before, anyway? Or, at night? They did at night, and you're willing to work that out and continue to do that if the companies will work that out? Okay. Alright, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Magrino.
Yeah, I would just also, um, state that generally, we, I think I would be pretty wary of supporting, uh, surface parking lot in the downtown parking overlay, but I think given the specific situation where Bassett Creek goes under this, it is a unique circumstance with the property.
And Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to sort of clarify here, again, this vote, um, you know, all of our policies in this area really are to redevelop surface parking lots into buildings. And so this requires special permission even to have a surface parking lot here, because it's in the downtown district, similar to the parking maximum vote variance that's coming up here. So I think that this is supportable for the reasons that have been stated regarding the, the site conditions, and it sounds like the parking is desired, but, uh, just wanted to clarify that this vote is to allow for surface parking, uh, again, because of our regulations that discourage surface parking in downtown.
Right, is there any further discussion on the motion to approve item B? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lupe Pierre?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Freeland?
Aye.
6-0.
Okay, and we have items C and D, the two variances, one for an interior side yard setback, the other for the maximum amount of parking. Uh, would someone like to make a motion on either or both of those? Commissioner Magrino, would you like to take a stab at that?
I will, um, move items C and D and adopt staff findings for both of the variances, uh, the west interior side yard setback and increasing the maximum amount of parking on the site.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Commissioner Lupe Pierre.
Yeah, I, I feel as though the variances got brought up quite a bit, although I'm, um, a little bit in a conundrum, because it seems as though the concerns are about a larger issue more than specifically the fact that they're asking for a five-foot variance on an interior side yard, or about the fact that they're, um, technically increasing parking beyond what they're allowed to legally do. And I just wanted to, um, reiterate what, uh, Commissioner Slack had said about, um, your testimony being incredibly important, and actually, um, probably my best evening of testimony, I think, in my years here on the planning commission, so thank you. Normally about this point, I'm munching M&amp;M's, but, um, I do want to say, though, that we are limited in our purview, purview as to what we can legally respond to when we deny, um, an application. If, we can't just deny it, um, because a different private entity wants to use a parking lot that they don't technically own. It, it puts us in a bad spot, it would result in is a lawsuit, and then it would be even messier. At the same time, we also can't delay it, as a couple of speakers requested, because, um, there's a clock ticking. Delaying of this actually would result in automatic default on the application. They get approved, um, without any, uh, they might get approved without any conditions being attached that may, or may not be forthcoming. So it actually is, uh, potentially worse scenario for, um, for all of you who are opposed to this. I would say we have to find certain findings, and unfortunately, given the limited scope of these particular two variances, the findings are not there to deny it, because it's privately owned and what they're requesting is reasonable, um, and practical difficulties do exist. So, um, as much as I am definitely, um, empathetic and certainly supportive of what everything you're saying, I'm hoping that the loss of part of a surface parking lot is not the death of such an outstanding comedy club. I mean, I hope it's larger than that, and, and I'm hoping that, that developers will actually work with you to retain some access. It would actually be incredibly short-sighted of them not to do it. I think, I think that's apparent. So, um, I just want to let you know that my support of these has nothing to do with my, um, antipathy toward the whole testimony. In fact, I'm, I'm quite heartfully in support of much of it. I just, legally speaking, our hands are a bit tight on this and there's no findings to support denying it.
All right, the public hearing is closed once again. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Commissioner Magrino?
And I'll just sort of clarify, similar to my previous motion, that I think generally I would be hesitant to support increasing the maximum amount parking on the site. But given that it's largely enclosed, except in the case where there is Bassett Creek Tunnel going under it, that's why I'm supporting it in this case. I think Ms. Lukey here did say that very well, that this is not about Acme Comedy Club specifically. It's about the land use application involving the lot across the street. You know, earlier today, the commission voted for a drive-through that a lot of us probably wouldn't ordinarily support. We don't want a drive-through there, but the code says that the drive-through is allowed. And so if we deny that, we're potentially exposing the city to liability. And so we're just doing what is responsible for us to do, given the laws.
So the public hearing is now closed. Okay, okay, let's, let's, let's not talk in the audience now. So we have a motion and a second on items C and D. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Vreeland?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Lukey here?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
6-0.
And that motion carries. Lastly, we have item E, the site plan review. Commissioner Magrino?
Adopt staff findings and approve the application for site plan review for a new 124-unit residential building.
We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Lukey here.
Um, yeah, I'd like to add a sixth condition, that the applicant is to work with surrounding businesses just to develop in, off our parking protocol, if at all possible, to allow for adjacent and neighboring businesses to utilize any unused spaces.
All right, we have, we have an amendment to the motion that adding a condition, a sixth condition, that the applicant work with surrounding businesses on identifying parking spaces. Any, in any case, an additional condition. We have a second, we can add that on a voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries to amend that condition. Commissioner Bender, did you have something to add? Okay, so we have a motion to approve the site plan review with the addition of that sixth condition. And clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lukey here?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Vreeland?
Aye.
6-0.
And that motion carries. And that concludes our discussion on item nine. Thank you to everyone who showed up to speak. Our next item of business is item 10, the 38th Street Mixed Use Project. Staff is Ms. Holley. And we can let the room clear out for a moment and then move on to a presentation. All right.
Good evening, commissioners. The item before you is a series of land use applications for the development of a mixed-use project at the intersection of 38th Street and 28th Avenue South. The applications include rezoning of the property at 3806 28th Avenue South, rezoning of the property at 3812 28th Avenue South, variance to the maximum floor area ratio in the C2 district, several yard variances, vacation of air rights over the alley, minor subdivision to adjust the lot line between 2702 East 38th Street and 3800 28th Avenue South, and site plan review. So for a little context here, the property is outlined in bold. You can see the center parcel, which is currently C2. That is 2707 East 38th Street. That currently contains an auto use, as shown here in the picture, with a large surface parking lot. The building at the corner at 3800 28th Avenue South is part of the application solely for the minor subdivision, which would adjust the lot line around that building and the building would be retained. The property south of there at 2806 28th Avenue South is currently zoned C1 and the applicant is requesting C2 zoning. And then the parcel shown in yellow there currently has R1A zoning. That is 3812 28th Avenue South and currently contains a duplex that the applicant is proposing to rezone also to C2. So the duplex is shown here, a side-by-side duplex. And then there's an existing single-story commercial building at 3806 28th Avenue South. In terms of the rezoning, again, the applicant is requesting C2 zoning on all the parcels. In this case, you can see there's a combination of zoning districts. We have R1A, C1, and C2. Staff is recommending approval of the rezoning primarily based on policies for transit station areas that call for high-density development with pedestrian-oriented services and retail uses. The parcel is about two blocks east, or two blocks west, excuse me, of the LRT station at 38th Street and High Wathah Avenue. There's currently a mix of districts on the site, so some level of rezoning is required to allow for a cohesive development project in this location as split zoning isn't allowed. The retail spaces are small scale and the applicant is proposing to retain the pedestrian-oriented overlay district on the parcels where it's currently located and extend it one parcel south to the parcel at 3812 28th Avenue South. So with that in mind, it would retain the pedestrian-oriented character called for in a transit station area while allowing for the density that the policy is looking for with a mixed-use building. The applicant is proposing 53 dwelling units in this location and three ground-floor commercial uses. So the proposal was before you at Committee of the Whole a couple of months ago. It's changed slightly since that time. You can see here, there are two ground-floor commercial spaces on the east side of the alley and one on the west side of the alley. The residential entrance faces 28th Street, 28th Avenue, excuse me, and there are walk-up residential units in that location. The applicant would build over the alley starting at a height of 16 and 1/2 feet. And that would start with the third floor of the building with units over the alley. And the fourth floor recessed back from 38th Street slightly. And looking here, there's surface parking behind the building that was evidenced here. That surface parking would have the building cantilevered over it for most of it with just the outer edges of the surface parking exposed. When it comes to the rezoning, again, there are policies that call for land use changes on 38th Street. So in the 38th Street small area plan, this is in the station district. That station district identifies this site specifically as being an anchor site to anchor development, mixed-use development between 38th Street and the transit station. There are policies that specifically call out land use changes depending on larger-scale redevelopment schemes. And more specifically, the plan states that redevelopment of single-family areas adjacent to or near 38th Street should be limited to areas where the plan envisions redevelopment facing 38th Street and states that adequate parcel depth should be acquired in order to avoid the need for variances from zoning standards that arise from small sites. So this is an area where redevelopment is called for, and I'll address that, second piece of that in just a moment here. In terms of the variances, here's a view of the building. So the building is, as it was at Committee of the Whole, is still designed to read as three separate buildings essentially. So facing 38th Street, you have a brick building and a stucco building separated by the alley. And then as you round the corner, I don't know where that one went, you have a third building that's separated by that cupcake building. They are all connected, but it gives the appearance as a third building, separated with the existing building at the corner. This one having lap siding as the primary material and some metal panel. In your packets, you'll note in the supplemental packets, I did put together another exhibit that hopefully will explain all of the variances a little bit more clearly. So that's what you're seeing here. So the variances have been identified with letters based on the way they're called out on the agenda. So let's see, the, starting with D is that small green section on the south side of the site, fronting on 28th. That is a front yard setback variance from 19 feet to 14 feet, just for that small section. Then you can see the orange line there. That's where the pedestrian-oriented overlay district kicks in and they then have a maximum setback requirement of eight feet. So there are actually two variances required for that one frontage that staff is recommending approval of. Due to the conflicting regulations in that location, practical difficulties clearly exist. F is that blue line around the existing building at 3800 28th Avenue South. Variances there are requested from 11 feet to zero. The variances are required because of the building at 38, or 3800, has residential uses on the second floor with windows facing those property lines. There is currently language that's introduced to address this situation. Staff is recommending approval of that variance as well. Again, practical difficulties exist. This is essentially a Z-shaped lot that has four interior side yards, which is a unique situation. They are providing 7.5 feet of separation on the south side and about seven feet of separation on the west side of that existing building. Staff does have some conditions of approval related to that under site plan review. And then, let's see, the light blue line on the bottom of your screen is a south interior side yard setback variance from five feet to four feet for parking. There's also a yellow line, which is a rear yard setback variance from five feet to one foot for parking. And then the pink line, a west interior side yard setback variance from 11 feet to zero. Those last three variances are the ones that staff is recommending denial of. Going back to that language in the small area plan, the plan says adequate parcel depth should be acquired to avoid the need for variances from zoning standards that arise from small sites. And then, for example, related to yard landscaping and parking, not simply to increase the size of the project scale. In this situation, we're clearly looking at several requests for variances to increase the size of the building. There's surface parking here, the parking is not below grade. Again, this is a transit station area and a pedestrian-oriented overlay district. So while the parking is primarily covered by the building, what you're seeing here in white is open to the air. So that yellow line where there's a parking setback variance from five feet to one foot, that's directly adjacent to a single-family home. The outline of that single-family home comes about back to halfway through this second parking stall here. That house is only four feet off the property line, so there'd be five feet of separation between these seven surface parking stalls and that single-family home. They also have windows that would look directly out onto that parking. A fence is provided for screening, but there's no room for landscaping. Down here where the blue line is, this is a request from five feet to four feet for parking. Again, there's a single-family home that comes back to about this first stall and then their rear yard is located where the rest of the parking stalls are. So while that is a slightly greater separation, it doesn't meet the minimum and it doesn't allow for the seven-foot landscape yard called for in site plan review. Both of those things, again, specifically addressed in the small area plan. Also, in looking at the findings, staff does not find that practical difficulties exist for those two variances. The minimum parking requirement here is 26 stalls. They're providing 44 parking spaces. So they're exceeding the minimum. Even if these two retail parking space, or retail spaces were to be combined and have a parking requirement in the future, they'd be looking at 29 for their minimum. This row of parking stalls here, these eight stalls, could be made into compact stalls without resulting in major adjustments to the site plan. And that would allow for the landscape yard to be provided in that location and meet the setback requirement. The south yard here, denying that variance would result in the elimination of those seven parking stalls. And then the last variance that staff is recommending denial of, it's actually a partial denial. It's in lieu thereof, the pink line there. So that's a west interior side yard setback variance from 11 feet to zero. Again, that variance is required because there's a mixed-use building next door with residential uses above. That building is only about four feet off the property line, so there would be four feet of separation between the proposed building and the existing. Staff is recommending denial of that and recommending that a five-foot setback be provided. That would get, first of all, it would allow for windows to be provided on that elevation, which would eliminate blank walls that are located there and then reinforce SEP Ted principles for allowing for natural surveillance and visibility of adjacent spaces and would allow for greater separation between buildings. So setback variances are in place in part to maintain adequate access to light and air and adequate separation between uses. For these three variances specifically, staff was not able to make that finding. For purposes of time, I'll just get into the conditions of approval for site plan review. For site plan review, alternative compliance is needed for the number of materials for the durability standards for materials. There are several instances of blank walls. The window requirements on the first floor facing the parking lot have not been met. And all of the required landscape yards within the parking area don't meet the minimum requirement. So staff has some conditions of approval related to mitigating the blank walls. One of those, as you can see here, this fourth floor here is setback from the building edge, so the building code would allow for windows in this location. Staff is recommending that windows be added to eliminate that blank wall, calling for a material change here. Again, because that is pretty visible as you're coming down 38th Street. There are some interior elevations where we're recommending approval of the alternative compliance for blank walls. We are recommending approval of the number of materials when it comes to alternative compliance, particularly because this development has been designed to read as three separate buildings. The metal panel is kind of an accent material on each building, but prevalent enough that we call it a primary material. So that's four instead of three. Getting to the backside of the building. So this is the backside of the residential units that front on 38th. There's a 30% window requirement there because that does face the onsite parking area. No windows are provided in that location. And again, on the south side of the retail spaces, this faces the surface parking area and no windows have been provided there. Those situations require alternative compliance for the minimum window requirement of 30%, to have blank walls in excess of 25 feet and for the SEP Ted principles which call for opportunities to observe adjacent spaces and to provide opportunities for natural surveillance and visibility. So staff is recommending that the window requirements be met on those three sides. So here, here, and on the west elevation. And I guess the other one to note, there is a fourth exterior material. You can see this fiber cement panel that's introduced on the interior rear-facing elevations in two locations. Staff is recommending that that panel be eliminated and replaced with a material that's provided elsewhere on the building. So I'll close there and I can just respond to any questions you might have.
Okay, commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Magrino?
Just to make just a quick comment, this is extremely helpful.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you for putting that together.
All right. Commissioner Kronzer?
Could you turn, turn to the elevation on 28th Street? Can you refresh your memory what we saw at Cowal? I don't recall the fourth floor being so much glass and so proud to the street elevation. Maybe the applicant can add to that as well.
So what was before you at Committee of the Whole? Looked like this. So there was some additional metal panel on that fourth floor and less glazing than what you're seeing now.
And it's also setback, was it not?
Yes, that is correct.
Do you know how far?
I don't think these are dimensioned, so... Do you recall how far was the setback at Cowal? We're estimating about three feet, maybe four.
A little more.
Yeah, it's this. This is the area of the setback here.
Okay, if there are no further questions of staff, I'll open the public hearing on this item. I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first. And if you, if you don't mind, focus your presentation on the variance, variances where staff is recommending denial and any other kind of outstanding issues. Come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, thank you for hearing us. I'm speaking on behalf of the project. We are the architect for the project. I just wanted to walk through just a couple of things for those of you that may have not been at the Committee of the Whole, talk very quickly about our approach to the project and then touch on some of the denials and conditions that were mentioned. To begin, the goals of our project were really to align as well as possible... To begin, the goals of our project were really to align as well as possible with the station area plan and the density requirements that were called out, as well as taking into consideration pedestrian experience and the pedestrian overlay. The goals of transit-oriented development were taken very seriously, along with commercial uses that are appropriate for the neighborhood, so that it actually decreases the vehicle use. We're actually creating or opening the opportunity up for uses that would be beneficial for anyone that's in the neighborhood area. We're also looking at continuing that urban fabric and really creating that urban context, that Main Street feel, and that experience for the pedestrian at the first level. You may have also noticed that we took into consideration some of the feedback that we received at Committee of the Whole, as well as at our neighborhood meetings. So some of the adjustments that you made, note, I don't suppose I can get back. So some of the adjustments that you may note are the dumpster location. Previously, that was at the southwest corner of the site, right next to the building on the northwest corner. And one of the things we heard was, there's a lot of noise related to the trash collection. So we identified a location at the interior of the site that would be more appropriate. As a result, that did take away some parking stalls in that area, and we saw an opportunity to address one of the comments that we heard from the neighborhood in that, similar to what we were just hearing. There is a significant street use right now in this neighborhood from individuals that are using light rail transit, and they're basically using the streets as a park-and-ride for not just a day or an evening, sometimes for a week at a time. And as part of that, we felt we had an opportunity to provide some additional parking for those commercial uses on our property and in the neighborhood to address that concern. In addition, the south stair next to, so at the very south of the site, that previously we were requesting a variance for that particular stair, we worked with the plan and identified a way that we could bring that into the site, so that we were avoiding a variance in that area, and also really creating more openness for that neighbor. So let's dig into a few of the denials, but first, I think, we'll start with some alternative compliances related to the landscaping, because I think a lot of the denials for variances and the conditions that were noted tie to that idea of creating separation and the landscape buffer between our project and the adjacent uses.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Tony Creya, and I'm with the Land and Group. And I just wanted to share and touch base briefly regarding the understanding, obviously, of the minimized setbacks. And really touch base on our experiences, knowing how significant and important that they are. So I took a bunch of photos from a number of our projects over the last number of years just to show the significance. They were all vertical when I started this. But let's start there, if we could. So Councilmember Bender, this is in your ward. This is the motive apartments on 24th and Colfax. There we have just a simple two-foot strip separating that curb cut from the neighboring property. Initially was a fence. We negotiated with the neighbor to not only have the fence, but to bring forth the plantings to provide a green edge there. If you notice, as you can see through the perosity of that fence, the cars from the neighboring apartment building are parked tight to that fence, but that creates that separation. So we're able to achieve that. This is a project in St. Paul called Printer's Row, done back in 2005. There's a four-foot strip, and so there's just a line of trees. Again, knowing narrow spaces, separation between separate parcels, and again, a track record showing that significance. West River Commons. So this is an actual photo on Saturday of the alley condition to the north side of West River Commons. The plantings that are on the left are, separate the alley, the city alley, from 40, 50-some cars that one cannot see because of that density and the plantings and a fence that exists in that location. So those are some simple examples that we understand the significance, have the experience of the significance. We don't need to have massive amounts of space to create those barriers. And again, knowing we have a very challenging site with multiple side yards, that's why we're proposing some of those simple fixes.
Commissioner Lukey here. You have a question?
I just had a question, because one of the setback requests is for 11 feet to zero feet on the west interior side yard, and it would be four feet from a neighboring building. Do you have any photos showing what two buildings four feet away from each other would look like?
We don't, no.
Commissioner Cronzer?
That's why we're talking about building code stuff. Wouldn't you need 10 feet between those two buildings to put windows in both buildings?
Are you referring to the Cupcake building?
Nope, the other side.
The other side, on the west side?
Yeah.
Between those two buildings? I believe we can have protected openings as soon as there's five feet. I could jump ahead and address that item. One of the reasons that we were looking at designing that building to a zero lot line is that idea of an urban Main Street, to avoid the gaps between buildings that really, you know, sort of, as you're walking down a nice urban road, you're not going to see those gaps unless they're really drastic and intentional for a patio use or some other sort of outdoor use. So we believe bringing the building right to the lot line is going to allow for that urban experience and the opportunity for redevelopment on the adjacent corner to the west, building right up to the lot line and really filling out that street nicely. So just to step through a few of the denials specifically, and I'll try and make it simple and tie them, it was great to have that exhibit, and tie them to some of the conditions. So to begin, item E on the south interior side yard setback or reduction from five feet to four feet had been requested, and we request acceptance of this variance request. You'll note that number 10 also declines the alternative compliance proposed, and that would require us to go all the way to a seven-foot landscape side yard. And as we've illustrated here, within four feet, a lot can be achieved with that landscaping. A lot can be achieved with the density of planting and noise reduction, and we believe that that would be an advantage to this location. G, variance to reduce the west interior side yard setback. I just mentioned our notes on that. We believe that that's the best solution in order to meet the vision for this community, and it would be a lost opportunity if that five-foot setback is implemented. Number, letter H, variance to reduce the south rear yard setback. It was requested to be reduced from five feet to one feet. One of the consistent comments that we heard was about parking. So we believe that this would be one of the items that we're hearing over and over again from the neighborhood that is experiencing development early on, prior to them being able to see a lot of policies and procedures being implemented that helps protect the parking that's on the street. So we believe this would be a valuable, desirable, desirable amenity for the neighborhood. So this item also ties to condition 10 and 11, that greater than five feet is being requested, so we'd need seven feet in this location for a landscape buffer. In this case, the one-foot setback allows us to have seven additional parking stalls, and although that is over the number that we're required to have, we believe it's a significant benefit. And that, within that one foot, we had not, we had not indicated that we could provide vines on that fence. That was an oversight on our part. But there's plantings between vines, or even putting planters along or on top of the fence that would really add to that, the buffering and to that experience for the neighbor next door. So talking about the conditions, item number three, windows at the first floor facing parking. To begin, I'd like to request a clarification. I believe on the west elevation, that since it's residential, that 20% would be the requirement. Is that correct?
Because this is all technically one building, it's a mixed-use building, and the commercial requirements apply, so it's 30%.
One of the reasons I was asking that is the, there's additional, if this is defined as a residential use in the 20%, if that were to apply, there's also conditions within the residential use that would allow us to locate windows, especially, to hit 30% is a pretty high number within the heights allowed. It would also allow us to use some clear-story windows in locations in those residences that we would like to see some privacy. The general position on this is that we do have a lot of eyes into this parking lot. We have a lot of uses, both from the commercial and the residence, that'll be using this parking lot. It's not just a commercial parking lot. So we believe that the safety within that area is adequate minus the additional windows. And there is a concern that, especially in the residences, the marketability of those units would be compromised, and you may end up with windows into an empty unit. So items four and eight, windows on the fourth floor east adjacent to Cupcake and the west elevation. So I believe that this was referring just to the upper levels of the east elevation, that's correct. Okay. And the west, and number eight on the west elevation, since we're proposing a zero lot line, that would not allow us to have windows. And then finally, the north elevation, so it's really that piece that's wrapping Cupcake. Most of this elevation is blocked by views from the street, and giving the proximity to the adjacent building, we felt that views through this would not be desirable, unless we, again, were referring to just that top floor. That was number eight. Oh, I had them backwards then. I apologize. Number five, walls facing the building on the corner. The two noted facades face the Cupcake building. Again, the majority of it is blocked by view. We felt that maintaining that stucco wrapping the building was a more consistent approach than proposing a random material that we're using anywhere else on the building. It's hard to transition a material at the inside corner, especially when we're, with the look that we're trying to go for. So one of the items we propose is through the use of control joints. We can create interest on that elevation. Number six and seven, the material changes. Again, the design approach, as mentioned, was to create three freestanding buildings. We appreciate staff's understanding of this approach, and we also realize that this would challenge our ability to meet some of the material requirements, because we are taking a minimalist approach in areas. So on item number seven, we felt this was an opportunity to create a more intentional material change to wrap the outside corner. So that's at the point in the alley where we're transitioning from stucco to the panel material, which would wrap into the alley. We felt it was an opportunity to address the material change and create some interest. Item number six, this ties to the wrap, or excuse me, I have them backwards. That was tying to that. Number seven, sorry, I have to check my notes, on the west facing the alley. No, I did have those correct. Number, yeah, number seven was the item I just mentioned. And number six, the fiber cement panel on the south elevation being replaced with the lap siding. We felt it would, again, with this material, the full panel piece wrapping versus changing, deciding to make those two elevations on the south side match, we felt that maintaining that panel would be more appropriate. And then finally, the landscape yards, number 10, 11, and 12, we've discussed 10 and 11. Item number 12 is relating to the minimum of seven feet between the east side and the alley. It was noted that there's additional sidewalk that could be lost in order to accomplish that. It's actually an area that we have bike parking. You can see there's bumpouts that we would be able to include bike parking, and there's also a spot to allow cars to back up slightly, and we would lose both of those by shifting those. So we request that these items are taken into consideration, and that the variances requested are approved, and you consider the conditions noted.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the applicant? If there are none, we can move on to some other speakers. How many of you would like to speak on this? Oh, Commissioner Cronzer?
I have a quick question. What color is the metal panel you're proposing on the upper floors?
If you don't mind, come to the microphone, just so it's recorded.
Probably light to medium gray.
And that's a corrugated metal panel, or?
Yes, yeah. I remember a square profile versus the curvy one.
Metallic or paint?
Paint.
So flat?
Yep.
Like lime?
What's that?
Okay. How many of you would like to speak on this item, just so I have an idea? So just a couple people. So you can decide who goes first, and come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Halter. I live at 3820 29th Avenue South. I'm a new resident to the neighborhood, specifically moved there because it is close to the light rail. We appreciate the urban development that's happening there, and we appreciate that there is a development wanting to be in that location. It is favorable to the neighborhood, however, it seems too big for the space that's allotted. My concern is, and my reference is, an apartment building that encompasses the coffee shop, Kenai? Okay, the Kenai Coffee Shop. It is one floor lower, or one less floor to that, and it seems to work pretty well for the use of the space. The variances, I think, don't allow for the residents who are remaining in that area. Someone asked, what's four feet? Four feet is less than I am tall, and I'm not a very tall person. So I would like for you to consider that with the residents, and that when you are making a decision, you are setting precedence for further development in the area, and that is what my concern is. I'm also concerned about the impact of the construction on the homes in that area, about when the construction vehicles are coming through, what it's going to take to build that, and might there be damage to the houses that are close to or already 100 years old. I'm concerned about the impact of the use of the existing water lines, sewer lines, the age of that infrastructure, and what's going to happen with that construction traffic coming across that. And then if that needs to be upgraded, what is going to be the cost to the residents who are currently living there? So we appreciate this development of this area. The variances requested indicate that perhaps this particular project is too big for the space that is being requested. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, would you come to the microphone and state your name and address?
Hi, and good evening. My name is Molly McCartney. I live at 3933 27th Avenue South, about a block and a half south of the site. I'm also the board president of the Stanish Erickson Neighborhood Association. I believe you have a letter from me in your packet, and I stated in that letter that the development team did a pretty good job of doing outreach to the neighborhood, including the rezoning petitions. They did host a meeting with about 70 people in attendance, and folks had some concerns about congestion, the building size, as well as construction impacts. But overall, I think it was a positive, it was a positive meeting. The Neighborhood Association does not make recommendations for or against development projects typically, and we haven't this time either. We just want to convene and be a place for neighbors to learn more about projects. But personally, I'm here on behalf of myself and my excitement for a project like this in a station area near the 38th Street Station. I moved into this neighborhood 12 years ago, right before the Blue Line opened, and I've been expecting transit-oriented development like this that whole time. So this is, I think, a positive step for our neighborhood and South Minneapolis in general. I think some of the variances that are up for debate tonight kind of have to weigh what the impact of additional parking spaces would be on the neighborhood, even though we are trying to move toward using transit more. There is a lot of impacts for on-street parking. I think allowing additional seven spaces might alleviate some of that issues for neighbors. But I just wanted to say I'm in support of the project, and please consider granting all the approvals tonight. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. And if there are yes, please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Kirsten Kukler. I live at 3814 28th Avenue South, and my building will be torn down. But I'm... But I'm in support of this because I think it's great for the neighborhood, and it's really exciting to see the neighborhood be growing. I also agree that parking in front of my house is starting to get more and more difficult, and so the variances that they're proposing to add additional parkings, particularly because they're adding additional residences are, would be valuable if I was staying in the neighborhood, but I'm not, so good luck.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And commissioners, we have a total of 12 applications before us. Are there any further questions of staff? Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wondered really if you could put the, that very helpful graphic back up as we track through the different variances.
All right. Yes, that would be helpful.
Question for staff. Are there any parking meters on 38th Street currently? Doesn't look like it.
No, not directly in front of the site.
Any parking meters anywhere nearby?
No, not that I'm aware of. There are a couple of critical parking areas further down closer to the station, but no meters.
Okay. Are there any further questions? Commissioner Lupe here.
Actually, I didn't have a question. I was going to make a motion, but.
But go ahead.
All right. I, I'm just going to get the ball rolling here. I'm going to move approval of items A, B, C, D, and F. I think Nicole's team's done a really good job of making a building kind of fit in the scale of the neighborhood while making, it's a large building, but it reads a 3, and I appreciate that, so.
All right. So Commissioner Lupe here has moved approval of items A, B, C, D, and F. Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, could you repeat that one more time?
Yes. That is a motion to approve items A, B, C, D, and F. That is the rezoning at 3806 28th Avenue South, rezoning of 3812 28th Avenue South, the variance to increase maximum FAR, the variance to reduce the required front yard setback, and the variance to reduce the east interior side yard setback, and north interior side setback. Not E, that's F.
Yes.
A, B, C, D, and F. Okay. There any further discussion on that motion related to items A, B, C, D, and F? If there is none, clerk, please call the roll.
Vreeland?
Aye.
McGrino?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Six, zero.
And that motion carries. Moving on to some of the other items, starting at the top, this item E, the variance to reduce the interior side yard setback along the south property line for surface parking. Further questions about that, or would someone like to start us off with a motion? Item E, Commissioner McGrino.
I will do, make this a little bit less complicated. I will move to adopt staff findings and reject both of the applications for the south side setbacks. That's item E and H.
So that is a motion to deny variances E and H. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And did I hear a second? All right. So we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I realize we've spent a while on this. I just wanted to ask staff again to just describe the impact that this will have on the project. Sometimes we do things here and then we get appeals, and I just, if we, if we can sort of make sure we're clear on all the impacts.
So if E were to be denied, it's possible for this row of parking stalls or one row of parking stalls in this section of the parking lot to become compact, which would reduce their length by three feet. That additional three feet would bring it into compliance with the seven-foot landscape yard and the minimum side yard setback requirement of five feet. Also, the sidewalk back here could be adjusted to gain a little space. There are a couple of options on the side of the parking lot. Also, 25% of the stalls can be compact, so if those eight stalls became compact, they'd be within that 25% allowance. Over here where the yellow line is, that's the setback from five feet to one foot. You know, if you're weighing one or the other, it's theoretically, you know, if you were to leave this and this became compact, it's possible, but that wouldn't bring it into compliance. That would give you three feet, which would still require a variance from five feet to four. Both rows couldn't become compact without exceeding that 25% maximum for compact parking stalls. There is a variance for that, but that's not one that's been applied for here tonight.
So the options, if we denied both of these variance requests, would either to be, to remove parking spaces from the plan or to come back some other time in the future to request a variance for more compact parking spaces?
Yes. If H were denied, those seven spaces were, would need to go away, or an additional variance for compact parking, along with a side yard setback reduction or rear yard setback reduction would be required.
I mean, I know the answer to this question, but it's not possible for us to allow for those extra compact spaces because no variance application has been submitted.
Correct. The public hearing notice did not include that variance application, and those findings weren't made in the staff report.
And can I just, not to belabor this, but I think it's kind of important because it sort of affects the overall project, and I'm hearing folks say that they want the parking So the, the anticipated result that we want from denying these, these variances is, I mean, are we trying to create more space? Because the space, it's either surface parking or what is it? It's, we're trying to get more greenery here? Because again, the separate, it's not like a building is coming up to this space. It's, it's surface parking.
Correct. So it's to allow adequate separation between uses and to provide that buffer yard that's called for in the small area plan and in adopted policy related to our landscape yard requirements and our setback requirements. There's a character issue there. You know, it's, right now, it's auto repair, so there's a building pretty close to that property line currently. When this was before you got committee, the whole, there was a single loaded row of parking in that location with a drive aisle. That drive aisle has now become parking spaces, so.
And to explain my reasoning a little bit here, you know, with item E, as you were saying, that's something that they could adjust to make compact spaces. With item H, you said the house that's currently to the south, it's four feet from the property line? So they would have, you know, bumpers five feet away from windows?
Yes. I can't find my little remote to change the page at the moment, but that house is four feet off the property line, and it actually has windows that directly look out to that parking area. There's an additional nuance with the code there that they have a six-foot fence proposed, but where it meets the back of the house, it has to step down to four feet. So that doesn't necessarily allow for the headlights to be visible, but it diminishes the amount of screening that can be accomplished with the fence, and landscaping would provide additional screening and an additional buffer in that location.
Commissioner Lupe here.
So Kimberly, just to clarify, if both of the motions were approved, approving E, which is the denial, would result, if they changed a middle row by the dumpster to compact, it wouldn't result in a reduction of parking at that location? It just would mean that seven spaces become compact, correct?
It would be up to the applicant how they want to do that adjustment, but yes.
But yeah.
Yes.
And then the outcome of H would effectively, I mean, they could technically parallel park two cars. So it would really just be a reduction of five stalls total without having to come back for anything. They could have the compact spaces and have those and have a just a total reduction of five spaces without having to come back for additional applications, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Cronzer.
Yeah, I have a request to Commissioner McGrino to split these variances into two separate motions.
That's fine. So would I withdraw a motion?
Yeah, I think if you withdraw the original motion.
Okay. So I will withdraw my previous motion, and I will make a second motion. I'll start with item E to adopt staff findings and reject the application for the south interior side yard setback.
So we have a motion and a second to deny variance E related to the interior south side yard setback in the area where the applicant is requesting a variance to reduce that setback from five to four. Commissioner Cronzer, do you have anything to?
Yes. So I will not be supporting this motion because I think one foot here is better put into the parking stalls. You've got columns coming down for the building above. Making these even smaller is just going to make this park not even more of a disaster than it might already be. If I can speak to H, I think I do support denial of H. So let's give parking as good a chance as we can get. One foot in the side yard is, I think, negligible either way.
Can I ask? Commissioner Lupe here has a question.
Yeah, I had a question for Commissioner Cronzer, because I'm looking at this too, and I'm thinking the columns don't have an impact on the depth of a space of a compact versus traditional. So what's the, what's the one foot gaining versus not gaining that they can't still do? Because I'm not seeing the, I mean, seven compact spaces isn't the end of the world. We see them all over the place. They could still have them.
In my personal driving experience, depth of stalls relates to how far people pull into spaces, and people don't generally pull all the way up to touching the thing in front of them, the 18 feet or 16 feet or whatever it is. And with the columns, it's just, I was just in Whole Foods this week in downtown, and that is really tight under there. So I think the balance here is giving a little more space to the parking. Because I think four feet, while not ideal, is still a good amount of space to landscape.
Okay. And I have to say, I agree with you, like, columns make it terrible, but I don't think the depth makes any difference for the columns. I mean, it's certainly a narrow spot either way. Although I wish that they would be some wider because it is a nuisance.
I was, I was just going to ask, what is the distance between the structure to the south of the, on that east side? Is that a, do you know?
On the east side?
Yeah, below item E.
I was just going to offer, it is probably possible to hold them to the five-foot side yard setback requirement on the east side of the parking lot and take that one foot from the sidewalk, and then allow this south row of parking by the yellow line to become compact, which would reduce their variance from five feet to four feet. So these would be compact, these would stay standard, and you could steal a foot from the sidewalk potentially. I'm probably making it more confusing, so I'll stop offering commentary.
Commissioner Cronzer.
I believe you're shifting parking stalls away from building structure, and then you're back to the same problem. Maybe the applicant could speak to that.
Yes.
Like this second row of columns from the south?
Yes.
Kind of right between where it says the two bed? Yeah, right?
Right.
Nope, down there. Like, if you shift the whole parking lot a foot.
Exactly. And the same thing happens right here. We start to push those columns into the drive aisle and make it narrower essentially.
Your structure, which is maybe possible. I don't know.
The, I don't know, wood frame construction, you're really limited on how you structure those dwelling units so that we make sure that everything's bearing and have corridors in the right position. So making those kind of adjustments end up making pretty significant shifts in the overall layout of the building.
All right. Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I, I'm going to support, so I'm not going to support Commissioner McGrino's motion here on, on E. I think this is a reasonable, you know, variance request that has far less impact than, than the yellow line one over there. So just to give the sort of maximum flexibility with it, I think, what I think is minimal impact, the most minimal impacts on the adjacent properties, I'm going to, to go with that. E versus H, supporting E and not supporting H, which would be a no vote on Commissioner McGrino's motion.
All right. Is there any further discussion on the motion to deny variance E? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
No.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Cronzer?
No.
Lupe here?
Aye.
McGrino?
Aye.
And Vreeland?
No.
So we have three yeses and three nos.
Yeah, I will vote. It's a rare, rare occurrence. And I'll vote no.
Historic day here.
So that motion fails. Would someone like to take a stab at an alternative?
I would.
Commissioner Cronzer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will make a motion tied to letter E, a variant to approve the variance for the side yard setback along the south property line on the east side of the alley from five feet to four feet.
All right. We have a motion to approve variance E. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion? We may, well, we did talk about it during the previous motion. Maybe Commissioner Cronzer wouldn't hurt if you recap that, just because we are.
Certainly.
Needing to make some, make some findings there.
Certainly, we talked about the, the amount of landscaping that's provided, four feet versus five feet. As, as I stated, the four feet seem significant enough that the one foot, based on the complication with the, the building structure, and with, well, I guess we can't talk about future motion, but with the idea that a parking lot is designed as, as efficiently and effectively as possible to, to help protect the welfare of the, the users.
I think, I think that's a good, good summary. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Commissioner Bender.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to echo Commissioner Cronzer's point of view, I, I think the findings for the other variances, you know, this one is similar in that the site itself is very complex, and, and the shape of the site itself creates a practical difficulty. And so I think this variance is, is reacting to that practical difficulty in a way that minimizes the impact of this building on adjacent properties, which is why I have a different point of view on, on H. Thank you.
All right. If there's no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Vreeland?
Aye.
McGrino?
Aye.
Lupe here?
No.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
So that's four to two.
And that motion carries. So next, we have, well, would, would someone like to make a motion on? Let's, let's, let's go on to item H. Would someone like to make a motion on that? Commissioner McGrino.
I will take that back up and make a motion to adopt staff findings and deny the application for the variance to go from five feet to one foot on the south rear side, item H.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to deny the variance, deny variance H pertaining to the south side yard setback. The request is from five feet to one foot. Is there any further discussion on that? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Cronzer?
Aye.
Lupe here?
Aye.
McGrino?
Aye.
Vreeland?
Aye.
So that's six, zero.
And that motion carries. Moving on, would someone like to take a stab at a motion on one or more of the other applications? Commissioner Cronzer.
Well, variance G to reduce the west interior side yard setback, I will make a motion to approve the request to a zero lot line. Variance G to reduce the west interior side yard setback. I will make a motion to approve the request to a zero lot line. Do a zero setback, and I'll speak to that in a second.
All right, so we have a motion on variance G to approve the variance for a zero lot line. Is there a second? You have a motion and a second?
Yes, so my rationale here is similar to what the applicant is talking about. It's an urban street. The property to the west is own C1. It is a commercial use. I don't see any real benefit from making space here. It seems like if it works better for the project, I don't see a really good urban form issue with reducing that setback.
Commissioner Lupe here?
I have a question for the applicant, actually. Nicole, does having it four feet from the adjacent building negate the next door neighbor's ability to have windows on the second floor?
We're actually referring to this location?
Mm-hmm.
Correct? And so the distance to the adjacent building, I don't have it off the top of my head, but it's more than four feet in that location, isn't it? Four and a half, five. It, I do not believe it does.
But if it's under five feet, doesn't that not allow them by fire code to have windows?
The neighboring building is nonconforming as to its placement to its own property line, and the nonconformity related to its existing openings aren't impacted at all by the construction of a building next door. So we've run into this before, the AC Hotel over here next to the lumber exchange where they had windows on that side. So existing openings, moving the lot line would impact those existing openings, but constructing a building next door and decreasing the separation doesn't.
Oh, interesting.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve variance G. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Magrino?
I just wanted to ask if we, if we're making a motion to approve the application for the variance, if we still wanted to include the conditions noted by staff there for the, in lieu of approval there? So windows and landscaping?
Maybe Commissioner Kronzer, since he made the initial motion.
I believe the first condition is moot because the proposal is for a zero lot line. The second issue does say by, as allowed by building code. I believe we could keep the second condition. No?
Couldn't.
No, let's remove the second condition as well. Okay, no conditions.
Okay, so maybe we should just clarify in the motion language. Commissioner Kronzer, you were saying that the motion is to approve variance G and remove the two conditions that were stated in the staff recommendation, just so that's accounted for. So we have a motion and a second. There, is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Just to clarify, we will need findings because it's contrary to staff recommendation on this one.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's a good, good point. Commissioner Kronzer, if you want to take, take a moment and
Yeah, I will. So we got, it helps support early development in traditional urban form. It helps support small businesses in a mix of housing types and densities. It supports activity within transit nodes, I'm sorry, transit areas and commercial nodes. I'm sure it supports the tax base.
And I, I think we, we got a few of the things you said in your initial motion. I think we have a good, good justification for that now. So again, we have a motion and a second to approve variance G with no conditions. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Lipkeep here?
No.
Magrino?
Aye.
And Vreeland?
No.
So that is four yeses and two nos.
And that motion carries. Maybe someone would like to take care of items I, J, and K. The variance to the pedestrian-oriented overlay requirements, vacation of air rights in the alley and the minor subdivision. Commissioner Lupe here?
I move staff recommendation for items I, J, and K.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve items I, J, and K? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Vreeland?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Lipkeep here?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Six zero.
Right, and that motion carries. Finally, we have item L, the site plan review. Just looking through to see if there are other our other actions affect any of those conditions. Would someone like to start us off with a motion? Commissioner Bender?
Mr. Chair, thank you. I don't want to make the motion because I think others may have stronger feelings about the materials. But I just wanted to make a comment that we've had a lot of back and forth lately about building materials and conditions that are placed in planning commission and then project teams needing to make changes, which now we understand often have to come back through the planning commission for an entire approval of the whole project. So I just wanted to remind everyone that and just make sure that we can have some back and forth with the project team if we're going to design the building here in planning commission and we make sure it's something that we can expect to be built and that we're not going to be back here again in a couple of months revisiting the decisions that get made. And I know it's getting late, but I just don't want to rush through some of these final details and force the whole project to come back through.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Holene?
Number eight, which relates to windows on the west elevation, would be eliminated with the approval of that variance as they would not be allowed now per building code.
Commissioner Vreeland, would you like to make a motion?
Aye, with the exclusion of eight, which is no longer permissible.
All right, so we have a motion to approve item L, the site plan review, removing condition number eight. Is there a second? You have a motion and a second. Commissioner Kronzer?
Yes.
Kimberly, isn't number 10 also affected?
I was just getting up here to say that, yes.
Sweet, why don't you say that?
So the landscaped yard, seven feet in width between the parking lot and the south lot line. That one would need to be modified, so it relates to both the east and west sides of the parking lot. So I think with the motion that you made, that landscaped yard would end up being four feet in width on both sides of the alley.
All right, yes, we can, so basically Commissioner Vreeland's motion is, is in condition number 10 to change it. It currently reads landscaped yard, a minimum of seven feet in width shall be provided between the parking lot and south lot line. We will just change that to a landscaped yard, a minimum of four feet in width shall be provided between parking lot and the south lot line. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. And that motion carries, so we have now revised condition number 10. Is there any further discussion on the original motion to approve item L, the site plan review? Commissioner Kronzer?
I would just like to request that the applicant reconsider the metal painted color on the corrugated metal. If you go look at the lime building in my neighborhood, it's all flat gray metal in the back and it looks really awful. Think about the, where people are going to be seeing this building down the street from the single family and looking up at a very, not that I don't like the material, but in this condition, I think it's not terribly appropriate. So maybe something darker, maybe something that's more colorful, that has a little more life to it. And I also don't quite understand the fourth story facing 28th, that's all glass. It just seems very not residential to me. So maybe think about how because now it seems like it's screaming at you, us, before it was set back. It just seems incongruous with what the whole rest of the project is. Thank you.
All right, and Commissioner Kronzer, is that a friendly recommendation or are you adding anything?
Upon encouragement, I would like to add a fifth, fifteenth, excuse me, fifteenth condition that the applicant work with staff to revise the gray metal panel color and to reconsider the full glazing, four-story, fronting 28th Avenue South.
All right, so we have a motion to add a fifteenth condition related to the applicant working with staff on both the color of the metal panel and the fourth story glazing. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you'll indulge me, could I just ask the project team to comment on the materials as outlined here in these conditions and make sure that we're not coming back in a couple of months with a redesign?
Absolutely. We have the elevations here. Let me see if I can walk through these straightly. Yes, thank you. Okay, so if we look at, if you wouldn't mind, could I start with number three and just note that in, in reviewing the requirements within, I believe it's 530, yes, 530, it does refer to residential uses. And so it doesn't become clear that as soon as you have a mixed-use building that your entire property would be required to follow the commercial 30%. It does allude to the fact that for residential uses, you would be allowed to follow the criteria here and have a 20% and also be able to use clear story as part of that opportunity for privacy. So walking through these windows, number four would be added to the fourth floor at the east elevation adjacent to the building at 3828 to break up the blank wall. Right here. Right in here. Correct? Oh, sorry, here. Yes. Number five, a material change to break up all the blank walls in excess of 25 feet on the north and east elevation where they face cupcakes. So again, elevation I just pointed to. And here. Number six, the fiber cement panel on the south elevation shall be, excuse me, replaced with the fiber cement lap siding to reduce the number of primary materials. That would be this area. And again, our position to create the appearance of multiple buildings wrapping. Number seven, the fiber cement panel on the west elevation facing the alley shall be replaced with stucco to reduce the number of primary materials and make the rear of the building more compatible with the front. Sorry, these are hard to find. Actually, right here. Let's see, number 10, that was modified. Number 11. And the landscaped yard at the east side of the alley, that would, seven feet would increase that setback and push the parking over and remove some of our backup area along with some of the, adjusting some of the bike parking. So that would increase this area to seven feet and would push the bike parking and also remove part of this backup area. Did that answer any questions? Are there anything to point out on the site plan to clarify further?
Commissioner Bender?
Yes, of these, my question is mostly about number four, which is the windows, which is, is that is that a difficult change to make for the project?
Commissioner Vreeland, did you have?
Yeah, I was just hoping you could answer the question about fifteen.
About fifteen?
Yeah.
I mean, it's something that we can review. I mean, we obviously want, we'll take a look at that building. I mean, we don't want a building that has any appearance concerns any more than you do because then there's a chance of, something's going to have to be adjusted to begin. A lot, so that addresses the metal panel. The elevation where additional windows were added, the idea of making more of a high-end, very open feel that, that sort of visibility, the daylight, et cetera. That was one of the reasons for that change to add additional glazing in that area.
And the colors in the metal panel, and I believe my colleagues are trying to ask you if that would be problematic and what you think of changing the color and the material.
You know, I am not the particular designer on the project, so it's something that I think we would just need to take a closer look with the whole material palette. I don't like making a quick judgment.
Well, we're about to take a vote. You should probably
I mean, our preference would be to proceed with the design that we have proposed. We're calling out a gray color. I think as long as that motion of working with staff, perhaps it's the note of the finish, the flat sometimes has a different appearance than some of the others. We haven't picked the exact color of gray yet, so I think, you know, finding that gray tone that would be appropriate for the building is possible.
I think the way that condition is stated, we are giving staff some discretion there. So hopefully that, that won't create a big issue. Commissioner Kronzer?
My comment was about the color of the material, not the material itself.
You're not a gray fan?
Go look at the lime.
I'll have to go look at it. There, there are other examples in the community of some really great uses of that gray and sort of that, sort of Scandinavian vibe.
Okay, Commissioner Bender?
And then this 20 versus 30% glazing, I don't even really know what that means, frankly.
Commissioners, I would recommend that the commission consider just granting alternative compliance because of the level of ambiguity that we have around that issue in this instance. And perhaps if the commission is in favor of that, that the first floor of the west elevation facing the parking lot shall provide 20% glazing, period.
And would someone like to move that revision to condition number three? All right, we have a motion and a second, and that is to revise condition number three to read that the first floor on the south, of the south elevation and the first floor of the west elevation facing the parking lot shall provide 20% glazing. Or at least 20% glazing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. I don't know if there's any further discussion, but Commissioner Kronzer?
Fourth condition wasn't fully answered.
I have a question. I think it's my question for the planning commission. Do you feel like voting for the fourth condition or not? Because if you feel like it, I think we should vote for it. And if you don't think it's needed, I think we should not vote for it. But I don't know why we're going back and forth with the applicant 20 times. I feel like if we feel compelled enough to make them enforce that, we shouldn't. If we don't, then we shouldn't put the burden on them. Like we shouldn't make it be so ambiguous in that regard. Like either we want it or we don't.
Commissioner Bender?
Mr. Chair, you know, we really tend to get really deep into the details of these small infill projects in neighborhoods, which I think is just fine. They're often then appealed to the city council. And I would submit that having six city council members design small infill projects is not a great use of anyone's time. So I just want to make sure that when we are making decisions at the planning commission that have ramifications for the overall project design and a thing that has a lot of variances, that we understand the ramifications to the project so that we don't end up, again, with six council members trying to design a small apartment building in a neighborhood. with six council members trying to design a, a small apartment building in a neighborhood.
I would like to ask a very specific question. Is there any issues with the building code adding the windows in the fourth condition?
So the way the building is designed, so what we're talking about in condition number four is strictly this small section of building, which you see as you're on the fourth floor. That section of the building is recessed, as you can see here, somewhere. So that recess does allow the separation needed for some protected openings on that side of the building.
All right, is there any further discussion? I can?
One note.
Yes.
On that side of the building, one of the considerations in addition is if that existing building were ever removed and you had the opportunity to have that connection, that zero lot line, that project could potentially have built right up to our building, and you have a nice continuous street front along that whole facade, if windows aren't added.
Commissioner Magrino?
Just wanted to make the honestly friendly comment that we, sorry, we approved like a 26-story building on consent earlier, and it kind of, it feels like this project isn't entirely finished. And so in the future, if there's stuff like this, it's really great to work it out at committee the whole, rather than to do it sort of up here, kind of for the reasons that Commissioner Bender was saying.
Okay, so maybe I should just recap the, the original motion, since we've amended it a few times. So the motion was to approve item L, the site plan review, with the 14 stated conditions with some modifications. One, adding a fifteenth condition that the applicant work with staff on the color of the metal panel and the fourth story glazing. A revision to condition number three, changing the language so that it states that the first floor of the south elevation and first floor of the west elevation shall provide at least 20% glazing. We've removed condition number eight, and we've modified condition number 10 to state that a landscaped yard, a minimum of four feet in width, shall be provided between the parking lot and the south lot line. Are there any other revisions to that motion or any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Vreeland?
Aye.
Magrino?
Aye.
Lepke here?
Aye.
Kronzer?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Six, zero.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on this item and also concludes our discussion for tonight. Meeting is adjourned.